[S01] It's 7:35 PM. We have a big evening ahead of us, so I hope that everyone will stay engaged and try and stay energized. We should probably have coffee service, but we don't. Mr. Metrick, could you call the room?
Sure. Mr. Weissboard.
Here.
Ms. Rickards.
Here.
Ms. Pennanopoulos.
Here.
Mr. Nixon.
Here.
Mr. McReeve.
Here.
Ms. Teblin-Moffett.
Present.
Mayor Andrea Deutsch.
Here.
President Aaron Mutrich.
Here.
And Sean Walcott, our solicitor.
Here.
All right, I have no specific comments this evening. I've had enough to say on Monday night. Ms. Mayor, do you have anything?
Um, I do. I'll keep it short because we have a long meeting. I have the updated statistics for incidents in the borough that I will be handing in, and these are matter of public record. People can take a look at it at the office. So can we hand them in? Just a quick note, traffic stops have been up in the borough. People have been stopped more for speeding, going through signs, as I instructed. So they are continuing to be up, and we will continue that trend until people stop speeding and go through stop signs, and then it won't be so bad. There had been a rash, an uptick in break-ins in automobiles in the borough, and almost exclusively, every one of those break-ins was to... Sorry, I just ran up the stairs. Every one of those break-ins was for vehicles that were unlocked. And we have been really, really trying to tell people, when you go in at night, lock your cars, and don't make us a soft target for people who want to open your door easily and rifle through your contests. And likewise, don't leave your pocketbooks and valuables in the car and make it attractive for people to go in and break in. If we all make it a habit of locking our cars, people won't be interested in coming here because it'll be too hard to get good stuff. Lastly, I just wanted a note to congratulate Officer Belphy. We got a very nice note from some older gentleman that he stopped to help, and he went out of his way to help him with his automobile, and stuff like that that makes our neighborhood police force the kind of force that we like, a caring force that really tries to take care of the constituents. And I just wanted to give a shout-out to Officer Belphy and thank him for his duty above and beyond the call of duty. Thank him. And that is it.
All right. With that, let's engage in his pledge of allegiance. Ms. Mayor, could you lead us?
Sure.
My pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under Allah, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Solicitor Walcott, would you like to begin with public hearing?
Yes, at this time, we will adjourn the meeting, and we will adjourn into the public hearing for ordinance 1011. This is the tax rate ordinance for Norbert Borough for 2019. I'll move in a couple of exhibits. First is the proposed ordinance itself, 1011. Second is the proof of advertisement in the Main Line Times for the hearing tonight, and the legal notice for that hearing, this hearing. This ordinance has been available for inspection at the borough office, and I believe made available to the public for inspection. Again, this is the basic ordinance that we do each year that sets the mileage rate for general revenue purposes, for solid waste collection, and for sewer services.
Could you please use the mic?
This is the ordinance that sets the mileage rate for the upcoming year for general revenue purposes, which will be 9.710, which is $9.71 on each $1,000 of assessed valuation. The tax rate for solid waste collection will be $1.62 for each $1,000. And the tax rate for sewer services is $2.90 per 1,000 gallons of water used by properties connected with the sewer system in the borough. And this will become effective, again, January 2nd, 2019.
And Mr. Walcott, is this a change at all, or maybe Mr. Metrick, from last year?
There's not.
These are all 0% changes. They're all effectively the same as last year, just so everyone understands. All right.
Are there any questions from the public or from council regarding these ordinances? Hearing and seeing none, we will close this public hearing and adjourn back into the public meeting.
Thank you very much. All right, let's go to Agenda Item 6, Public Comment. I would ask, because we do have a conditional use hearing later this evening, if you could focus this section of public comment on anything not having to do with the conditional use hearing that's coming later. You should feel free to discuss any issue, anything on your mind, not related to 114 Forest Avenue, and then we will have a separate public comment section later in the meeting for that particular topic. If I could just see hands of anyone who would like to speak on an issue not related to 114, so I can figure out... Okay. Yes, ma'am. Go ahead.
Okay.
If you could state your name and address.
Marilyn Bergman, and I live at 9 Shirley Road. I've been a resident of Norbert for 45 years. I spoke, I think, at the last council meeting, and I still am left with difficulty. I don't know how to proceed to do the things that we talked about in the last meeting. I'm just stymied. I don't know who to contact. I don't know what to do. So I need some guidance or some help, some support. For anyone else who's here, I own the shops of Penn Valley, and there's some structural and logistical things with that property that need to be addressed. The other issue that I want to raise is that I...
Could you stand up so everybody can hear you?
Certainly. Hi. I looked into the Borough of Norbert Council Code, Article 3, for privileged parking. And when I called in about it, I was told it was just for residential. But when I look at the code, it says that owners or lesses of commercial buildings shall be restricted to a total of two parking stickers or permits for each full 22 linear feet. So obviously, the code says that there is an avenue for people who are business owners or own commercial property to have the ability to... My parking lot is very small. If it's not large enough, if the tenants have to park there, there's no room for the customers. And, you know, Norbert has been very fortunate in having as much business support as it has. I'm well aware that my house taxes have not gone up very much at all in 45 years because Norbert has this backbone of Montgomery Avenue and Haverford Avenue. I also know that brick-and-mortar businesses are increasingly in trouble, increasingly in jeopardy. And if we make it so that customers don't have an easy time parking, we're going to shut down our commercial properties because they will go to the internet. And, you know, I want to see Norbert's businesses flourish. I want to see my tenants flourish. I need some help with this.
Okay. I'm looking around the table here. I think there may be some people who thought they reached out.
Yeah.
And also, following this public comment, council is going to recess into executive session, and that's going to give us an opportunity, maybe for our borough manager. He can speak to you directly.
Great.
On the side, when we have a few minutes. We won't have to wait through the whole evening, but we'd like to help you.
I appreciate that very much.
Is there any other public comment not related to 114 Forest Avenue? All right, hearing none. We will recess into executive session. You can all stay where you are. Council members, let's retire to the council chamber and move back as quickly as possible. Thank you. We'll move to Action Item 7A, a motion to approve the minutes. Council Nixon.
Yeah, thank you. President Mutrich, I move that Borough Council approve the minutes for the November 8th, 2018 workshop meeting, and November 20th, 2018 business meeting of Borough Council.
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Unanimous. 7B, a motion to approve the schedule of bills.
Yes, President Mutrich, I move that Borough Council approve the schedule of bills and pay the general sewer and solid waste funds, and authorize the borough manager to pay all otherwise bills henceforth.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Passes unanimously. 7C.
Yeah, I move that Borough Council approve the retirement of an inter-fund payable in the amount of $107,789.15 from the general fund to the solid waste fund, and the retirement of an inter-fund payable from the general fund in the amount of $157,348.78 to the sewer fund.
Second.
All right, there's a second. I'm going to ask Mr. Metrick to just give us a brief explanation. That's a lot of money.
Sure. This motion is a correction of funds that are lying on our books right now, an obligation of the general fund to the sewer and solid waste funds. This obligation has been built up over years of intermingling cash accounts for the general sewer and solid waste funds, and then getting at the end of the year and having to untangle a very large knot. And so we finished last year, fiscal year, calendar year 2017, with an obligation of $189,000 and change from the general fund to the sewer fund, and we a similar balance of $203,536 from the general fund to the solid waste funds. We weren't able to untangle that knot of cash accounting until March 1, so we ran the transactions that happened in those first two calendar months, and we ended up with the balances you see tonight in the motion. So the general fund continued to pay some of the solid waste fund's obligations until we actually pulled those funds apart into separate, dedicated cash accounts. So this is an accounting exercise. This will clean up our books. This retires debts from the general fund to the sewer and solid waste funds. The sewer and solid waste funds are well-funded. The sewer fund will finish this year with cash in its account roughly 100% of its annual expenses. The solid waste fund will finish the year somewhere in the range of 60% to 75%, whereas the general fund is going to finish somewhere in the range of 10% to 13% of its annual expenses in cash on hand. So you can tell by that comparison which of those three funds is the least well-funded and can least well-afford to have an inter-fund obligation that's been building up over years and years of this intermingled accounting practices. I expect this motion and this ask of council not to happen again. All inter-fund obligations will be resolved of actual cash transfers at the ends of years. But in this particular area, there will be no movement of funds. We're asking council to authorize the retirement of those obligations and essentially write off those debts that the general fund has to these two funds. So the general fund can go forward, and our fund accounting can reinforce the integrity of our fund accounting.
Yeah, we discussed this in Finance Administration last night. We've been looking at this for a while now. Our solicitor and our auditor both stamped this as kosher. Really, it's a byproduct of switching from one accounting system to the accounting system that we're using now. And they're not writing off of debts in the literal sense that it's money we owe. It would be as if you had two bank accounts, and you decided that Account A owed Account B $50. It's really just an administrative correction of a switching of bookkeeping systems. And we've also expended general fund money to cover expenses that could have been paid for by the funds between the debts we're writing off.
Any questions from council members? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? None? Unanimous. Section E, back to you, Jim.
Yeah, President Mutrich, I move that Borough Council approve the fee schedule for 2019 per the attachment included in the meeting package.
Second.
Seconded. Any questions?
No questions.
No questions. I reviewed it. I tried to add every holiday from every culture to the calendar to make sure there were no conflicts, and I didn't see... So thank you, Sean. You guys did a good job.
Oh, I'm on the wrong thing.
We'll be there soon enough.
Sorry, I saved that all my time.
Yeah.
Fee schedule. Mr. Metrick, go ahead.
The fee schedule remains mostly flat in that we're... I'll just highlight the only changes we've made. If you want to rent a traffic cone to mark off a parking space for moving, you're going to have to put down a $25 deposit. We'll give it back to you if you give us the cones back. We're adding $5 to bulk pickup fees because our rates of disposal are going up at the township, and all other fees remain unchanged over year-over-year comparison. And we've added a whole bunch of new fees. Thank you, Chief Gallagher and Mayor Deutsch from the Police Department for services such as fingerprinting and other elective things you can get from the Police Department. So thank you. Andrea, thank you, John.
Thank you. And I would add, it's important for everyone to understand, fees have to be representative of the actual cost. We can't just make up a fee. Fees are not profit centers. We do an analysis, we figure out what it costs us, and we set a fee, and we adjust it from time to time. Any other council members have something to add? All right. All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. All right, Jim.
Now, back to your schedule. I move that Borough Council adopt the proposed meeting schedule for 2019.
Second.
Seconded. They would sit over ahead of my time. A little embarrassing this evening. Any other comments?
No, I'm glad it was looked at, and thanks for doing it.
All right, all in favor?
Aye.
It is approved. Number seven, number F.
Jesus, a long one.
It's Michelle.
Oh.
It is a long one, but I'm not going to lie to you.
I move that Borough Council approve the attached request for release of escrow funds for price-crossing land development according to the Borough Engineer Letter dated 12/10/18.
Second.
Second.
If you don't mind, this is just... There's a list of criteria when there's a development or building that are required to be fulfilled before funds can be released in escrow. And we discussed this in Finance Administration, and all the criteria for price crossing have been met by the Borough Engineer. So the release of the funds is appropriate.
Okay. Any questions from the council members? All in favor?
Aye.
Unanimous. Michelle.
I move that council approve the extension of the existing property leasing contract with Herbert Yentis and Company, Inc., until December 31st, 2019.
Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded. Any discussion?
It's just a one-year extension of the same.
Of an existing?
Yeah, yeah. There are property managers for 201 St. Bayne Avenue, and we'd like to make sure...
I...
I'm sorry. They're... Yentis and Company has been... They are the property managers for 201 St. Bayne Avenue, which we own, and they manage the rentals and the building maintenance and such forth, and they've been doing a fine job. Their contract is... Needs to be extended annually. So this is an extension of the existing contract.
All in favor of extending the contract of the current property manager of 201 St. Bayne Avenue? Aye?
Aye.
Thank you. It's unanimous. H, Council Teblin-Moffett.
Hello. Thank you so much. I move that Borough Council authorize the borough manager to advertise an ordinance amending Norbert Borough Code, creating Chapter 3, 9, 4, Property Maintenance, to provide for definitions, standards, and enforcement of the maintenance of property and structures in the borough. Mr. Metrick, we take it away.
Is there a second?
Yeah.
Thank you, Michelle.
That's yours. That's to Michelle.
Thank you. This ordinance has been a long time coming. Myself and Ms. Moffett and Assistant Manager West and Building Code Official Kevin Walsh, and Solicitor Walcott have all weighed in on this. I'm probably forgetting two or three people that have worked on it over the years, at least in the idea stage. This property maintenance code is derived from international standards that are not part of... Not something that is currently enforced in the borough. These are standards that govern the upkeep of the exterior property, how stormwater is being treated, how landscaping is being maintained amongst other things in the code. We arrived at standards that we feel like are enforceable, and will provide for a baseline condition of state of repair for all properties in the borough: rentals, owned properties, and commercial properties. So if there is something deficient in a property and we become aware of it, the Building Code Official would review for compliance with this code. Could be anything from plumbing, electrical, malfunctioning heating systems and so forth. And if notified violation is discovered, the code enforcement officer will ask for voluntary compliance first through a quick-to-issue form process. And if we don't get compliance, we'll move forward towards more action through the district justice if need be, if we get to that point. So this is an entirely new piece of legislation for borough to consider. We're going to be monitoring it very closely in the coming year to see what kind of obligations it creates, financial and otherwise, for us to manage on the back end, in terms of receiving complaints, processing inspections, and enforcement actions. I'm very proud of this code the way it's written, and I thank everyone who has worked on it.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Any council member questions?
I just want to thank the Public Safety Committee for taking the initiative. I think this was a lot harder than some of us realized. And I just commend the Public Safety Committee and Gigi for a lot of hard work on doing something that's going to help a lot of Norbert residents.
Thank you. All right, all in favor of adopting the ordinance... All in favor of advertising ordinance 1012, the property maintenance code? Please say aye.
Aye.
Two long meetings in one week. Takes a toll. Can I go back to Councilor Teblin-Moffett?
You can. Thank you. Council members, I move that Borough Council authorize the borough manager to advertise an ordinance amending Chapter 50, Building Construction, to rename the chapter, Construction Code Uniform, to adopt the 2015 International Code issued by International Code Council, and the provisions amended by the UCC Review and Advisory Council, to repeal all prior inconsistent provisions within Chapter 50, and to provide for the Administration Enforcement Appeals Board and fees for the code, and to repeal Chapter 67, which... 67, would you speak, called Fire Prevention.
Okay. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Council Nixon. Mr. Walcott, you want to?
Yeah.
As soon as I can. Currently, right now, in the borough, we are operating under, I believe, 2009 Uniform Commercial Code, which are essentially building codes, so not property maintenance issues, but actually building issues, which impact new properties, certain older properties, plumbing, electricity, new installations and such. So this is essentially adopting the Pennsylvania standard of the 2015 codes for those. In the past, Norbert has had their own fire code and was not operating under a uniform fire code, which was found under Chapter 67, Fire Prevention. We are adopting the 2015 Fire Code as well, with certain amendments set forward that are the best for the borough. Therefore, Chapter 67, Fire Prevention, is no longer necessary. There's a lot of overlapping provisions, but this does bring the borough into more uniformity with what is required in Pennsylvania for those building and fire standards.
Can I just say something?
Thank you.
Oh, I'm sorry. So this is a long time coming, and when I first got here, Bob was wrestling with this, with UCC standards, and trying to be able to work within the confines we had at that time, and then sort of handing it off to Public Safety, to the Fire Code Division, and John, and the Office, and Kevin Walsh did a lot of work and carried the ball to make sure that there were no conflicts and that all the documents reflect each other, and so that we have one ring to rule them all, so you don't have to... Any builder doesn't have to go fishing around for three different documents. So thank you for your work, and thank you, Bob.
All right, anyone else? All in favor of advertising ordinance 1013, Uniform Construction Code?
Aye.
Unanimous. Let's go back to Council Nixon.
Yeah, President Mutrich, I move that council approve the proposed budget for the Borough General Fund, Sewer, and Solid Waste operating budgets for 2019.
Is there a second?
Second.
All right. Any discussion?
Just very briefly, no budget that passes any... Yeah.
I've never found a microphone that I like. I don't think any budget that passes a government
is going to be perfect, and this one is certainly not. I just want to say that I'm really proud of the work that the Office and Finance Administration Committee has put into this budget. It was... We really grappled with a large funding deficit this year, and I know that it was a goal of council to take an approach to budgeting that we right-size our budget going forward. That's my term, but that we live within our means, and we start to adopt budgets that free up Norbert in the future and allow us to dig out of some of the financial holes we're in, and just improve the quality of services that we render. And we instructed Sean to try and prepare a budget that would right-size government functions in Norbert with a secondary look at what the tax rate would be. But to be clear, our goal was strictly to pass a budget, or at least present a budget that's ethical and just, that meets constituents' needs while also being sustainable. And we were able to do that this year in a manner that does not raise taxes. That doesn't mean we're going to be able to do that every year. I can guarantee you that's not the case. This year, through a lot of hard work, we were able to achieve that goal. If we pass this budget tonight, taxes will remain the same. If you account for inflation, that's actually a modest tax decrease. And I just wanted to say that I think this is a budget that we can all be proud of. I'm really proud of this council for taking a long-term approach to budgeting, and I think it's going to allow us to tackle all these great projects that we talk about at this table in the years to come. And maybe I don't look like it, but I'm excited about this budget. I think it's a great leap forward for Norbert finances.
Thank you. Any other questions, thoughts, comments, groups? All right, all in favor of adopting the budget?
Aye.
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 Great. Budget is done. Let's move to Kay.
All right, well, Kay should be easy now. President Mutrich, I move the council approve ordinance 1011, Tax Rate Ordinance, setting the Borough General Fund, Sewer, and Solid Waste Taxes and Fees for 2019.
Is there a second? We've got another voice here.
Second.
There we go. Any discussion here?
It's covered by the previous, if anyone wants taxes to be flat.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right. L, back to Finance.
L, okay. Long night. I move that council approve the retirement of outstanding principal in the amount of $372,562.88 for a 2001 general obligation note with a 20-year term, payment to be made from the Borough Capital Fund.
Second.
Sean, you want to tell us what we're doing here?
Yeah. This is connected to the budget. This is connected to the tax rate ordinance. This is the retirement of a loan taken out many years ago, in 2001, a $2 million loan that the borough borrowed to fund in part the downtown improvements at that time, sidewalks, the municipal parking lot behind McShays, for instance. And the borough paid its annual payments of $160,000, more or less, and two payments of $80,000 a year. And we're very close to the end of that obligation. We have roughly five more payments to make. So this motion of council takes dollars from our capital fund today to retire that payment and take that burden off of the general fund next year. So that's part of what makes our budget balanced next year. So that's part of what makes our budget balanced next year, is we won't have this $160,000 bill to pay. So what do we do about the $370,000 we don't have anymore? Well, with all of the utility work that's been done in the borough, the utility companies, PICO and Aqua, are both contributing a substantial amount of money to the borough in lieu of paving half of the road. And we got the estimate from PICO, and it's somewhere north of $280,000. We're waiting on Aqua's estimate, which we expect to be somewhere in the range of $70,000 to $100,000. So in essence, we're swapping dollars in today's capital fund, replacing them with dollars that are coming into the borough from these paving contributions, paying off our debt, and reducing our, our operating expenses for next year and the two years that we follow.
Okay.
That's good.
Thank you. Any other questions? All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Motion passed. I will now take a motion to amend the agenda, to add 710, which is, to advertise ordinance number 1014, and ordinance amending the number of Borough Zoning Code, Chapter 124, to amend setback frontage building width, building height, and first-floor use requirements in the 5B district, and permit the modification of certain standards by special exception. Someone would like to make that motion?
I'm sorry?
Just say the motion.
So moved.
So moved.
All right, and seconded. All right, and seconded by Bob. All right, we probably should have some discussion. Mr. Walco, could you just give us some background?
Yes, these are, this is further amendments to the Form-based Code based upon the recommendations of both the Montgomery County and Narberth Planning Commission. There are two areas that this ordinance would, would impact. The first would impact corner lots in the 5B zoning district, so that is the Montgomery Avenue district. That creates a requirement that the primary frontages of those buildings be located along Montgomery Avenue, and that the secondary frontages be on a cross street, again, it's a corner property, that those garages and entryways are not permitted on the primary frontage, but that those site plan standards could be amended by special exception, which would be a hearing before the zoning hearing board, to allow the minimum frontage along Montgomery Avenue to be reduced to 50%, and the maximum frontage on the other frontages may exceed 50%, but not exceed 75% as long as the minimum rear setback is maintained. So essentially, that means on a corner property, you could have less on Montgomery Avenue, but more on the, on the side street, as long as the rear setback is maintained, meaning that the properties in the back aren't, aren't impacted. There are standards set up to allow that to happen that really focus on proper buffering to the rear properties, to making sure that no trees are removed, if they are, that they're replaced on one-to-one basis, that the impervious surface isn't exceeding the applicable limits, meaning there's not more concrete areas than otherwise would be permitted, and that there are proper connections throughout the property, sort of sidewalk, so it becomes pedestrian-friendly and able to walk through that area. And the idea of this, it would make the Montgomery Avenue corridor obviously more pedestrian-friendly and have ways of walking through it, and not just on the sidewalk, if someone's going to take advantage of that ordinance amendment. So that was the one part. The second part are further amendments to the, say, the Windsor Avenue Conditional Use Hearing provisions that affect the frontage requirements, the building height, setbacks, and first-floor uses of apartment buildings. These were amendments that were made, I think, after hearing a lot of feedback from the public about how what was done can be improved even more. So the Narberth Planning Commission took some of that input, consulted with the Montgomery County Planning Commission, and made additional changes to what's already existing. I think primarily, the changes are that garage entryways will not be permitted on the primary frontage, surface parking lots are not going to be permitted to butt any corner, building height that if you, if you are, I think, exceeding, sorry, that the fourth story, if you have a fourth story, that that fourth story has to be set back from the third-story facade from any side of the building that faces the street. So the fourth story shall be set back one foot for each two feet in height, to, again, the fourth floor would be set back further, creating more space along the street and in the light. And that any building that's located both the 4A and 5A zoning district, that is a possibility along that corridor, shall have a building height of 36 feet and a max three stories, because you're getting closer to the residential area there, so they're, they're packed. The setbacks, I believe the change was made to measure, there was a zero setback, I believe, and now that's being changed to a six-foot setback for, I believe, the side yard setbacks. So essentially, the conditional use application before us today has that six-foot setback proposed on the plan, although it could have been zero. So the, the six-foot is something that they would then have to do, or any of anyone else was going to utilize this, they would have to do that. And then there are some changes to essentially allow the apartment buildings to incorporate retail and light industry and office and professional service uses on the ground floor along North Essex Avenue, Forest Avenue, and North Narberth Avenue. I think there are some interpretations that would have made that difficult along the buildings codes. So this then allows, is more clarifying that these mixed-use buildings are permitted and can be developed accordingly, because again, that getting closer to Windsor, it would allow that retail use. And then there's a provision stating that you, you cannot have multiple principal buildings on one lot, because I believe that would otherwise be permitted in this district, but if you're going to take advantage of this conditional use in the future, you would not be able to utilize that. So those are the, the changes that this ordinance would make. This ordinance, if approved for advertisement, would need to go back to the planning commissions for 30 days, so we would not have between now and the January meeting, I believe it is scheduled for the third Wednesday. So it would, the earliest it could be adopted would be the February meeting.
Point of order.
Yes, Bob.
I believe we, we moved to amend the agenda, but we actually didn't move the ordinance itself.
No. My apologies.
That's okay. So I could make that motion.
Please do.
So council members, I move ordinance number 1014, an ordinance amending Narberth Fire Code, Mr. Walco just outlined, Chapter 124, Section 124-301, dot point C, point four.
Would someone like to second?
Second.
All right, we'll include Mr. Walco's comments under this motion, which is now on the table. Thank you for paying attention.
I can say it again.
Much to be loved, though.
This has been something that we have done based on additional feedback. It's an iterative process. We're always listening and trying to enhance and tweak and change. Council members have any specific questions at this time, or either the solicitor or? Okay. So all in favor of moving to advertise?
Aye.
Unanimous? Thank you. There was another, or item of business that we were going to discuss this evening as it related to whether certain places in the code come to a conditional use, or whether they go to a special exception, which would be basically the same thing, but worked by the zoning hearing board instead of council. And I believe, John, could you speak to the timeframe? It's, it's similar.
Yes, as, as I mentioned, this ordinance, even though it was approved today, we wouldn't be able to enact for February, until February. If we were to discuss another zoning ordinance in January, there is 30 days between January and February, so you would have an opportunity to, to make those changes in another zoning ordinance prior to the January meeting. Now, that may impact this ordinance, because, again, this is all about the conditional use hearing, and if we make that special exception, again, I think the criteria would remain the same, but where this is located in the code would have to be sort of moved around. We can flesh that out in the next, you know, couple of days, and then we can come back before January to discuss, discuss that. But this, this ordinance does have the 5B Montgomery Avenue sections done by special exception, so that's new, so we're moving away from conditional use for that.
Does that make sense? Okay. All right, so with that, we can move to agenda item 8A. Mr. Manager, your report.
It'll be included with the meeting package. Thank you.
Included with the meeting package. Mr. Solicitor, do you have anything?
No, no report.
All the other monthly reports have been filed. Any comments for the good of council?
Actually, I'm sorry, I, with the zoning, I'm not always lightning fast. Does that last ordinance that's going to be advertised affect any conditional use outside of the Montgomery District?
No.
Okay.
Outside the Montgomery, yes, it does. The Windsor Avenue.
It would change Windsor to special exception?
No, not, not yet. That is something that we can explore and have.
See, I suppose, so this is, the only thing it does with conditional use is Montgomery.
The only thing it moves to special exception.
Yeah.
Right, right now, there's nothing in Montgomery, so it's not a change in Montgomery.
It's a creation.
It's a creation, but we're not creating it as a conditional use.
Creating it as a special exception, right? Thank you. Just maybe try and.
No, no, you're right.
Thank you. Okay, any new business?
One quick, to the council.
Oh, go for it.
I held off on bugging you all about the winter newsletter that we were putting out, because I know we're having some changes in January, so if the council and the public decides that that's a helpful communication tool, I thought that we could group in January.
Okay. Well, I'll, I'll repeat it. I recognize that we can't, you know, we're trying to move the meeting along, but we only have one microphone. Sorry. What she said was that there is a winter newsletter that is being prepared, and that council members need to make submissions if we do intend, in fact, to publish it, and we will discuss that offline, see if we publish it. Thank you. Any new business? Any old business? All right, we, we made it to item 11. Solicitor Walco.
We are going to adjourn the public meeting, and we're going to adjourn back into the public hearing, the conditional use hearing on the conditional use application of addressing 114 Forest Avenue of Narberth Associates LP and 123 Coulter Investors LP. This was a hearing that commenced on November 20th, 2018. We were unable to finish at that time, but we continued it on the record to tonight. At this time, I do see the applicants journeying and moving slowly around the pack this way. Mr. Fronthold is in the front. Mr. Fronthold, are you, are you ready to proceed at this time?
Yeah, we are, Mr. Walco.
It's by understanding where we left off is we completed the testimony of your engineer. We were going to have your architect, who was here today. What I recommend as far as, and then you were then going to have both your engineer and your architect sort of be there to sort of work together to answer questions or address certain issues that affect both at that time?
They are both here. They can answer your questions. Mr. Kagan, who had also testified as our first witness, is here this evening, and he is available as well for any questions.
So what I recommend is that we proceed with the testimony of your architect. At that time, were public questions, why would we have both your architect and your engineer? Let's get dragged into that point, because since your architect is still involved.
Just going to take a moment while we're sitting up to bring this audience up to speed on conditional use hearings, what they are, what they are, and also set some protocols so that everybody can have a voice tonight, and we can, and get everybody heard. As Mr. Walco expressed at our last conditional use hearing, conditional use hearing is not the process to provide conditions carte blanche. It's not, you can't impose barriers, and I want to make it very clear, as I did on Monday night at the President's Forum, this project is permitted by right. This is not a decision for council to say whether they want it, or they don't want it, or whether they approve of it, or they don't approve of it. It is a process by which the developer shows that they have met all of the legal requirements, and if there are small ancillary issues, as it may relate to setbacks or transportation, we talked about biking infrastructure at the last conditional, at the beginning of the conditional use hearing, those are things that we can discuss. And you're free, as members of the public, to express any concern that you like regarding 114 Forest, but I just want everyone to understand, when you are speaking, that it is not within the legal capacity of this council to choose not to proceed with this project because we don't want it. It's, it's just not a thing. So with that said, I would like to hand back to Mr. Walco for a moment, and then we will try and make arrangements to move this microphone so that everybody can hear everybody. And so thank you for introducing me while we figure that out.
And as we did last time, the, the process will be, we will have questions, or sorry, they will present their, their witness. Counselor will be able to ask questions to the witness. The audience will be able to ask questions for the witness, and that being questions, not statements. There will be a time for public comment at a later time. So at first, if you could just ask questions to the witness that is testifying, and those questions should be pertaining to what the witness has knowledge in or has testified to. So again, this, the first time around would not be the opportunity to, to make statements, and it should be comments directed to the appropriate witness that has been testifying. Now, we do have a core reporter here, and he is taking down everything that we're saying. So it's important that each time you come up, and I mean each time, because he's not going to be able to remember your name, that you state your name, and at least the first time you're addressed, so we can have that put on the record. Also, we, he can only write down one person talking at a time, so please speak clearly. Speak, speak up. Don't point, don't say this or that, or up here or up there, that doesn't translate well. Try to be as specific as possible if you're referring to something. And again, one person at a time. And with that, I will turn it back over to President Hutter.
Okay. So the microphone is not going to reach over there, but we have to ask if you could speak up so that people can hear you. If you would like to take the opportunity to move your seat, so you might be closer to the speaker, now is a good time to do that. Or you can stay where you are, that's fine. I am going to have the microphone sent down to this end of the table, so that when it comes time for you to ask a question, or to, when we get to public comment this evening on this matter, that you can come up and state your name and address into the microphone so everybody will be able to hear. There will be a three, three-minute timer on any questions or statements, and I will be keeping track.
All right. No, I'm good. All right, you guys are, you're ready to come. Mr. Fronthold? Thank you, Mr. Mutarik, and if people in the back cannot hear me, just say something, and I will raise my voice. Can everybody hear me at this volume? And our, our witness, Mr. McCuskey, I will ask you, Mike, to try to keep your voice up, and the same would apply to him. If you, at some point, can't hear him, just let us know, and we'll try to increase the volume. And I apologize if we're a little loud for the people in the front. So thank you and good evening, Mr. Mutarik and members of council, and we are in a continued hearing. As you recall, last time, this hearing opened with Mr. Kagan explaining to you his vision for the property, tell you a little something about the building. There were some questions with respect to parking and whatnot. We'll get into that a little bit further as we proceed with the testimony from our architect, Mr. McCuskey. After Mr. Kagan testified last time, Mr. Yan, the civil engineer on this project, described to you the existing conditions plan for what is there currently on the property of 114 Forest, as well as the proposed plan for a 56-unit, four-story apartment building at this location. The application, we believe, meets all of the specific requirements of the code. This use is permitted as a conditional use, provided we do meet those criteria and otherwise demonstrate that we are in compliance with the more general. We have premarked as exhibits, exhibits three through nine, which Mr. McCuskey will talk about. So what I would like to do is first introduce him to you, have him tell you very briefly what his background and experience is as an architect, and then quickly get into the plans that he has prepared for this site. So, Mike, I would ask you to be sworn in.
Have you some sort of, give him the full truth on the other two sides?
I do.
Okay, your full name and stuff?
Michael Scott McCuskey. MCC, L-O-S-K-E-Y.
And Michael, you're a registered architect, is that correct?
I am in the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania.
And by whom are you employed?
I'm a principal with Bernardin.
And can you tell us very briefly your educational and professional background and experience, particularly with respect to the type of building that you'll be discussing tonight?
I have my professional degree from Drexel University in Architecture. I'm trying, where I also teach as an adjunct professor. Primarily, I concentrate on the multifamily mixed-use urban infill projects with our front.
Now, you have prepared plans in connection with the proposed apartment building, is that correct?
Correct.
What I'd like you to do is go through those plans that you have prepared, and I believe that they are A3 through A9, or A8 are really the plans, and A8 is a materials board that would show the type of materials that would be applied to the facades of the building. I'd like you to go through those plans, A3 through A9, and tell us the relevant features of those plans as they apply to this application, and we'll make sure that you, in your description, cover the specific criteria that are set forth in the code.
So what you'll see here on the left is A3 and on the right is A4. These are renderings of the project, three-dimensional representations of what the building's going to look like. So the A3 on the left is actually looking from the corner of Forest Avenue and Windsor. And what this illustrates is a four-story apartment building. The main entrance feature wraps the corner of Windsor and Forest and basically shows you looking down towards, down Forest, down towards, you know, down towards the train station essentially. A4 shows you looking back in the opposite direction on Forest, back towards Windsor. So what you'll see is architecturally, based on the requirements of the code, which I'll get into just in a few minutes of the actual elevations, you'll see that the architecture breaks down as required into these almost vertical elements. We're required a certain amount of horizontal distance before we have to physically step the building back, a certain dimension, it's about eight feet, I believe, and horizontally another 16. So you end up with these step backs in the facade. In addition, what you'll see illustrated here are the two, the two center bays, if you will, step back about two to three feet on the upper levels, but on each corner, we actually step back the fourth floor 10 to 12 feet on each end, just to break down the massing. While that's not required, we thought that that was very beneficial to scale the project in addition to creating opportunities for balconies for the residents on the top floor. So I can grab the other.
Okay, now, the next exhibit you're going to talk about is A5, is that correct?
So, correct. So A5, what these exhibits are is what's required for the conditional use process. We're required to show conformance with the zoning ordinance, and in each upper left-hand corner of these two elevations, you'll see a chart that basically shows conformance to the requirements of the design standards.
And then before you go on, just so that it's clear, A5, which is the plan on the easel on the left, shows the east elevation as you would look at this building standing on Forest Avenue, correct?
Correct.
And A6 is the north elevation, or how the building would appear if you were standing on Windsor, looking towards the building, is that correct?
Correct.
All right.
So what we essentially have in both of these instances is conformance with the requirements of the design standards. We have a material palette, which is based on the real materials that you'll see shortly. We have the flat straight-on elevation as required, and then what we did was we took it a step further and showed your typical first floor, second slash third, and then fourth floor partial plans, how the wall undulates in and out, to show conformance with the requirements. In both instances, we actually showed conformance with requirements on both facades. So that would be Forest Avenue and Windsor.
All right. Now, these plans have been reviewed by the borough's zoning officer, Kevin Walsh, as well as from Yurki's Associates, as well as the borough's engineer, Dan Malloy, with Penone Associates, correct?
Correct.
Okay. And you show in the upper left-hand corner of A5 and A6, the specific provisions that are set forth in the code which this building must meet, is that right?
Correct.
And in your opinion, or do you have an opinion as to whether all of those are met as you set forth in the table?
They are all met per the table and per the elevation.
Okay.
So moving on, what we did was we actually took it one step further and showed the elevations of the rear of the building, which would be the west elevation, that is opposite Forest, and then we are showing the south elevation, which would be opposite Windsor. And this portion of the building right here, this opposite Forest.
Now, just for the record, you're referring to exhibit A7.
Correct, A7. This portion of the building in the center is actually set back 70 feet from these two sides. That's the courtyard that you see illustrated on our plans. So this is more of a U-shaped building as it faces the rear of the property. But you can see from a material standpoint, we actually take the same materials that we're proposing on the front of the building, the Forest and the Windsor elevations, and wrap them around the buildings to keep continuity and the architectural style consistent through the building.
So has it been your attempt to maintain quality facades on all four sides of this building?
All four sides, including the ancillary facades within the courtyard as well. Moving on to A8. A8 illustrates basically a massing or a yield set of floor plans for the project, very conceptual still, but what this shows is essentially how we're able to achieve our 56 units, our underground parking area, a conceptual section, and then the yield in the lower right-hand corner, how many are efficiencies, how many are one bedrooms, two bedrooms, and then the total number of units.
All right. And can you just tell us what those numbers reveal in terms of the efficiency, one-bedroom and two-bedroom apartments?
So for a total of 56 units, we have four efficiency units. An efficiency would essentially be a studio, you know, a small unit, that's 7% of the total. One-bedrooms would be 27 of the 56, that represents 48% of the total, and two-bedrooms of 25, that represents 45% of the total. And those, those sizes of those units range from anywhere from 550 square feet as our smallest unit, all the way up to our largest is about 1,400 square feet. So there's varying unit sizes throughout this building.
All right. And so we're clear on A8. At the bottom of A8 is the first floor plan for this apartment, is that correct?
Correct.
Okay. And then from left to right across the top of A8 are the second, third, and fourth floors.
Correct.
Correct. And in the lower left-hand corner of A8 is what?
Is the parking level plan that's accessed off of Windsor Avenue.
Can you tell us a little bit about the parking level and how that works, how it is accessed, how circulation is designed through that area, and what other rooms may touch that parking area?
So the parking, as they indicated, is accessed off of Windsor. The actual parking entrance is set back 10 feet from the main facade.
And can you point to where the entrance is?
Right here. And it's essentially the existing curb cut is there, that's there today.
Okay. And that is on the side of the building away from the intersection of Forest and Windsor?
Correct. Here's the intersection of Forest and Windsor, and it is down here.
All right.
As you come in, the garage would be access controlled, so you would not be able to get into the garage without a provided fob. Once you get in, it is two-way circulation in all directions, essentially an O as you travel around, and all of the parking spaces basically funnel off that in 90-degree orientation to the drive aisles. We have one stair that comes down, an elevator with an elevator vestibule, a trash room, and then ancillary support spaces for the building, whether that be bike rooms, mechanical spaces, electrical rooms, water rooms, pump rooms, things like that.
Is there an exit?
I'm sorry?
Is there an exit?
Yeah. And there will be an opportunity to ask those questions, but I'll ask it. Will there be an exit, and how will vehicles exit the garage?
If you're talking about vehicles, there is a vehicle entrance and exit. It's a two-way ingress and egress, and then there's required two means of egress out of here. One would be through a stair tower, the other would be over here and up and out to Forest.
So those are the pedestrian exits?
Correct.
Are they entrances as well as exits?
They would not be entrances as well. That would be, depending upon what we decide as far as safety and whatnot, it may be with panic hardware and whatnot through a gate or something like that, but that's to be determined.
Now, is there anything else you wish to point out with regard to exhibit A8?
No, nothing on A8. Do you want A9?
All right. Yep, let's go to A9. And tell us what that is.
It's not going to be supported by this. So what A9 represents, A9 represents the actual physical material samples that we are proposing for this building. So I'm going to put up A3 again. So for the base of the building, a stone material. As we go up through the building, we have a red brick. We also have a glazed green brick in certain areas of the inset, here, 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 and around this corner. We have a shingle siding, and then we have certain number, or certain varying colors and lap siding. There would be more of a tan and then two different tones of green. What you also see is the same renderings that you're looking at for A3 and A4 in the lower right-hand corner of this board.
Okay. Now, you had indicated that the apartment building criteria under section 124-502-F have been met, and there was the exhibit that indicated compliance in that upper left-hand corner.
For both facades.
For both facades. The facade that faces Forest as well as the facade that faces Windsor Avenue.
Correct.
Windsor. Now, there are other specific requirements of the code with respect to frontage, lighting, trash, signage, and streetscape. And I'm going to ask you specifically with respect to each of those requirements, under section 124-503, there are frontage requirements. Are those requirements met in this application?
Yes.
And there are lighting requirements, and will all of the lighting requirements be met by this application?
They will be.
Okay. And is there lighting shown on the plans currently, or is that something that will be further developed during the land development process as the preliminary plan is ultimately presented for Borough Council's review and approval?
The physical design of the lighting will be prepared during that process. We are hinting or suggesting at areas on the actual, the renderings, in addition to illustrating where the existing street lamps are of the, on along Forest, are the existing street lamps.
Now, there are trash requirements under section 604 of the code, and will those requirements be met?
Yes.
There are specific signage requirements for this building under section 605. Has any signage been designed at the current time for this building?
No.
All right. Will this building, the building signage be designed in such a way as to comply with all of the requirements of section 605?
Yes.
And finally, there are streetscape requirements under Article 7, Section 702, I believe, and 704, that relate to sidewalks and street trees. Can you tell us what is proposed with respect to sidewalks and street trees on Forest and on Windsor?
So this is A11. We're going to skip to exhibit A11. And what this illustrates, along Forest only, just as illustration, is conformance with the requirements of the ordinance. So a few things I'm going to point out, and I'm not going to point out every single thing on here, but we have actually gone through and surveyed every physical location of anything that's along Forest, and we'll do the same for Windsor. What you'll see here is this illustrates everything from existing sidewalk lighting, existing parking signs, parking meters, sidewalk lighting, parking meters again, all the way down for the, you know, for the entire property length.
That was, and I was just getting them out now. That A11 was not in the packet that we had given you previously, but I have copies of A11 for all of you. But thank you. I didn't want everybody flipping through their papers saying, where's A11? So here it is.
Thank you.
I think there should be another.
You guys okay to continue?
Yeah.
So what this also illustrates is showing conformance with the required street plannings that would be required here, the required street tree for every 30 linear feet of frontage in addition to the tree pits that are a minimum of 12 square feet with no less than three-foot dimension as a minimum in width. So what you'll see is this shows conformance with those requirements, just illustrating this is how we would show conformance moving forward with, once we get in the land development process. What this also shows you in yellow is a six-foot dimension that we kept consistent through the property, from basically Windsor through our, down Forest, as once you exit off of the property line. And this was something that was discussed with the planning commission to encourage us to make sure we had six feet clear with all the existing impediments along the, along the street plan.
Now, in ordinance number 1005 that was enacted on May 16th, 2018, there were revisions to the conditional use standards for approval, and section 124-804-A7 was amended. And new subsection four contains certain standards of approval for conditional uses. And the first is that a conditional use is in accordance with the borough's comprehensive plan, and any of its implementing or supporting plans or policies, and my understanding is that the comprehensive plan is in the works, so that it is not currently available to demonstrate compliance with this plan. But I would respectfully submit to Borough Council that this ordinance has recently enacted, the new form-based ordinance, and reflects the intended planning of the borough with respect to the entirety of the borough, and there had been ordinance amendments, and most specifically recent ordinance amendments. amendments, and most specifically recent ordinance amendments, that permit this use on this property by conditional use. So I would submit to you that it is in accordance with the comprehensive planning of the borough, although there is not yet a comprehensive plan. The next standard under 4B says it's harmonious, the conditional use is harmonious and appropriate in design character and appearance with the existing or intended character and quality of the development in the immediate vicinity of the subject property and with the physical characteristics of the subject property. Can you address that particular criteria and specifically talk about the relationship between your building design and what other architectural features there are on properties in the borough and in the vicinity of this site?
So I'll break that down into essentially two different components, the first being the palette of materials. We had studied the palette of materials for the existing buildings in and around the Norbert area. The form-based code does a great job of talking about materials, talking about precedent architecture within the community. So we essentially modeled that after the existing palette of materials we see in the area, and then how we can apply that to our building. In addition, you know, we broke this down into a little bit more of a contemporary arts and crafts look. A lot of the massing is driven by the form-based code and how much we have to step the buildings in and out. But we are addressing certain things like projected bays, step backs, and substantial step backs in the building, in addition to large windows that are proportionate to the architecture, but still staying within the requirements of how much windows can be. I think it's somewhere between 20 and 50% of the facade can be windows.
4C says the conditional use shall be in compliance with all requirements and additional standards enumerated in the provision which gives the right to seek a conditional use. And I believe that requirement has been addressed in both Mr. Yon's testimony and in your testimony this evening.
Correct.
And in your opinion, is this application in compliance with all those requirements?
Yes, I believe it meets or exceeds all requirements.
Then it says, indeed, the conditional use complies with the zoning code requirements of the underlying district in which the property is located, and I think you've answered that affirmatively.
Correct.
E says the conditional use complies with all other applicable criteria and standards of the Norbert Borough Code, together with any other applicable state or federal regulations governing the same. I'm not going to ask you to go through any state or regulations that could conceivably apply to this, but I am going to ask you whether it is the intention and whether this use will in fact comply with applicable state and federal regulations.
It will at the appropriate times as we go through the process.
Next, 4F says the conditional use will not be detrimental to nor adversely affect other uses of property in the vicinity of the subject property. Can you address that requirement?
I do not think it will adversely affect any neighboring or adjacent properties.
Subsection G states the conditional uses will be served by adequate public facilities, including streets, water, sanitary sewage, fire protection, stormwater control, parks and recreation uses, and other public facilities and services. Can you address that?
I think it will. I think the majority of that would follow under Mr. Yon's testimony, but to the best of my knowledge, for what would be required from me, I believe it will.
And it is the intention of this development to provide public water and public sewer to the building. Is that correct?
Correct.
It says the development, this is also 4G, the plan of development shall be properly designed with regard to parking and parking lot design. You have addressed that?
Correct.
Building relationships, lighting design, location and intensity, landscape architecture, access buffering, signage, hours or days of operation, safe pedestrian and auto circulation, energy efficiency, controls on nuisances such as noise and odors, and similar considerations. Do you have an opinion as to whether all of those objectives will be met in a positive way by the proposed development?
I think they will be satisfied during the appropriate design time.
Subsection H says the conditional use has merit and value for the community as a whole.
I think it does.
Do you have an opinion in that regard?
Not much more than I think it does.
Thank you. And finally, subsection I provides the conditional use achieves the objectives set forth in Section 124-101 intent of this chapter and promotes the public health, safety, and welfare. I had asked you to read prior to this evening, in fact, we have reviewed the intent provisions in Section 1 of, one of the code, and without going into them in the same degree of specificity, and those are generally very general standards. Do you have an opinion as to whether those intent provisions are met by this application?
I feel they're met or exceeded, everything in one and one.
Thank you. I don't have any other questions at the moment of Mr. McCluskey. If Council does, or members of the public do.
First, we'll open to council member questions. Council Wyssboard, you indicated you had a question.
Yes, Mr. Prumple.
Thank you.
Thank you. Yes, Mr. Prumple, in Mr. Malloy's letter of November 13, Mr. Malloy's the Borough Engineer, he requests that the building height be recapped, to confirm that he blows with his own, wondering if you or the architect will please explain the method by which the building height is calculated.
Thank you. We have discussed that with our civil engineer and architect because it's a function of both of their expertises, knowing what the elevations are at grade, also knowing how the building is designed. And I'll ask Mr. Yon to address that question.
I'm still scrolling, trying to. Yes, so the form-based zoning code has a section, has a site design standards in Section 501, and then it has separate definitions in Section 12. And in my opinion, those two conflict. And so I believe we meet 501, which specifies you take a calculation based on the average of the existing grade, and that then sets where your floor height is, but your building height is calculated based on a proposed grade. That being said, we did meet with the Borough Engineer, we went over these. I calculated it this way as well. It changes the, basically, our proposed grade, our average proposed grade is a few inches higher than the existing, and so we would comply regardless of which way, although I, like I said, I disagree that the definition is correct.
So given the two possible interpretations, you're saying that this building will meet the building height requirements in either case, in either interpretation?
Correct.
And when did you have this meeting with the Borough Engineer and Zoning Officer?
Last Thursday.
So you just revealed that item within, since November 13, since we received this letter on November 13, just in the last week.
I have another question as well, related to the setbacks and how they were measured, and if you could confirm for us how the setbacks are measured as per Article 12. This is also a item in the Borough Engineer's letter of November 11. And also, could you, before you, before you move on, could you state the building height as you calculated?
On A1, there's a calculation on the bottom left-hand side that calculates the average grade around the building. And we came up with an average grade of elevation 282.63. And then, based on where the residential level of the building is at 288, we then get the peak of roof is at 326.7, and so the proposed building height based on that is 44.1 feet. If we use the calculation the way the Borough Engineer has to do it, the building height is 44.2 feet. So it's really a hair difference. And then, in terms of the setback question, I agree that in SADO, the setbacks are typically measured from the right-of-way. However, for this conditional use plan, the amended code specifically says that the setback should be measured from the curb. And so, he's correct, that's what SADO says, but this is really under the conditional use provisions, and we meet, we meet those.
Can you state specifically those dimensions?
Sure. For along Forest Avenue, it's a minimum of six feet and a maximum of 12 feet from the curb. And along Windsor Avenue, it's a minimum of 25 feet from the curb.
And where do your, where do your facades actually, where are they in relationship to the curb specifically?
On Windsor, it is at 25, that minimum, and on Forest, it is 10 feet from the curb. And so it's, it's in between that six-foot minimum and 12-foot maximum. And we're, and at that. I'm sorry, I'm sorry. It would, we are at the 12-foot maximum on Forest Avenue.
With the side, with the side back 12 feet.
Correct. It's far back, and I'm sorry, I got confused here for a second. The right-of-way is 10 feet from the curb, and so we are two feet back from the right.
So you're providing a six-foot sidewalk as required by code, and then there's an additional six feet from the edge of the sidewalk to the face of the building?
So do you want to answer that too?
So, a little, a little bit more complicated than that. There, from the curb line to the center line of the tree grades, it is essentially 18 inches. From the center, from the trunk side of the tree grade, we have a clear space of six feet. So where we don't have tree grades, the sidewalks are seven and a half feet, minimum. But we have six feet clear outside of the tree, outside of the actual tree trunk. The tree grades, you can walk all over. So there is, so we do have more space than the six feet that's required, but we also have provided six clear feet outside of the actual trunk of the street trees. The yellow area on A 11, correct. That six-foot swath in the yellow, in the yellow area.
Any other council questions on this testimony?
Yeah, just while we're on the trees, can you speak to the species or the height of these ornamental trees or?
They'll be developed with the standards that are required as per street trees in the ordinance.
And that is something that will be, if this is approved and land development is moving forward, you will have that information at the time of the land development approval.
For what's required for the landscape architecture submission, correct. So it'll show conformance with the requirements.
How's that? Can you hear me?
Right.
Thank you. I have two questions. So the first is about which facade is where. So I'm looking, looking at A1, the site plan, and the rear setback is satisfied on the south side of the building? Correct, that's the 15-foot setback?
That's correct.
Okay, so that would be then the rear of the building. Presumably, that would make the front facade be along Windsor Avenue. I mean, when we think that, I mean, the front facade, but yet the front facade appears to be on Forest. So I'm confused in some ways looking at the site plan where it appears that the rear setback is perpendicular to what is by design, what, design-wise, the front facade is along Forest. I mean, Windsor would satisfy, I think, the design requirements for front facade, fenestration, location, garage, et cetera.
Could I make a first crack at that?
Please.
From a code point of view, because it's complicated, it's confusing. I think that you've heard from the testimony that we have what would qualify as front facades. We have designed to the front facade requirement for both the Forest facade and the Windsor facade. So the question really is, I think, what's a front yard under the code? When you look at the code, the code doesn't define what a front yard is. It talks about facades, front facade, primary frontage, but it doesn't really ever define what a front yard is. It has the definition of yard, and then it has parentheses, front, side, rear, closed parentheses, and then in the definition, it talks about a setback from the street to the building. Well, that really can't apply to the side yard. It could only possibly apply to a front yard. I think it's implied in what may be an interpretation of the zoning officer necessarily under the code is, well, what's the front facade? And then, we will say that where the front facade is required by the code, not where it is in fact, because in fact, we have front facades on both streets, but where it's required by the code, that will be the front yard. And then, once you know where the front yard is, you do know that the rear yard is opposite the front yard. So while front yard is really not defined, and you're not told by the code, if you assume that where a front facade is required, that that's a front yard, maybe that's a good way to decide what a front yard is. And then you say, well, what's the code say for corner lots such as this? And you go to Section 124-401-A2. It says, in the case of corner lots, this is a corner lot, the front facade may face either street, not particularly helpful so far. It says, with a preference for the street with the greater number of existing homes on the block. So you say, okay, what are the relevant blocks here? And I think the relevant block is on Forest from the intersection of Forest and Windsor, down that block. And you say, well, how many homes are on that block? And there aren't any homes on that block. And then you say, well, what's the relevant block on Windsor? And you would say it's between Forest and Essex. And you'd say, well, how many homes are on that block? Well, there are a few homes that are on that block. That, that's an analysis that I think is a reasonable analysis. It's based on the language in the code. There is a following sentence that says, where a more appropriate orientation exists. And then the question is, well, what's a more appropriate orientation when we do have front facades on both streets?
Mr. Prumple, could you have your, what was discussed prior as to why the, what is presented, presumably, would be a more appropriate orientation?
I will. It says, where a more appropriate orientation exists, Borough Council, and then if you flip over a couple of pages, where the zoning officers shall have the authority to identify the front facade and primary frontage line. Then it, it does go on to say, and this is the point, that on corner lots, the rear yard shall be located opposite the front yard. So we know where the rear yard is, but it's not perfectly clear where the front yard is, except for the preference that's stated on the block that has more homes. So in terms of the next question, as to Mr. Waco's question, the appropriateness of the orientation, we submit that we have significant orientation of this building on both streets. And we have a full orientation on the Windsor side of the property. And I would ask Mr. McCluskey to comment on the appropriateness of the orientation as the building faces Windsor Avenue. the building faces Windsor Avenue.
So as we did an analysis of the property, we looked at the two existing, largest existing buildings that neighbor are two non-front portions of the property. So one would be 108 Forest, which I believe contains Spots. About half of that building is actually constructed on the property line, between 114 Forest and 108 Forest. About halfway back to facade, it steps back, somewhere about five feet, and the remaining portion of the building is about five feet off the property line. To the south, there is an apartment building and two existing garages on flanking sides. The existing apartment building is about 11 feet off of the property line. Our existing building on 114 Forest is about six feet off of the property line prior to development of this. As we evaluated that, we thought, because of the existing setback that exists, in addition to the six feet, we would be somewhere in the neighborhood of 17 and 19 feet away from this existing building. And then over on Spot's side, we decided that the 15 was most appropriate on that side. In addition, because we're required, in a lot of municipalities I work in, the front yard has a more substantial setback, 25 feet in this instance. Because that is the longer dimension of our property, we decided, we thought that it was more appropriate to take both of our setbacks out of that, in addition to the existing condition that's already created with a building being built on the existing property line to improve that condition. In addition to that, there is an existing rhythm as you go down Forest Avenue. And for the most part, in between each of the proper buildings, there is some sort of access between there, whether that's vehicular, pedestrian, or whatnot. And keeping that rhythm in conjunction with giving us a separation from the existing building, we thought was most effective on positioning our building.
Go ahead, Michelle.
I'm going to have my own. Why don't you go? I'll be back.
Go ahead.
All right. So this is a totally separate question. I need to get the right part of that. Where are we? I apologize, I can't find where I was. Cindy, you should go.
Here, I just have to clarify what I was looking at. Sorry. So I'm looking at exhibit A4 here. And I don't expect you to know the height of the Spots building, but I just want to clarify. So the first three stories are the most prominent from the perspective of standing on Forest Avenue per A4. And the height of that is 32?
To the top of the corners?
Of the third, correct.
Measured from where? The property does fall off in that direction. So it's taller as it's closer to Spots, and it's shorter as it's closer to the intersection.
Okay. So let me rephrase my question then. What's the difference between the top of the Spots building and the top of the third floor?
I don't know that.
Okay.
All right. So, thank you. I found what I was looking at. Okay. So I have a question, and it relates to a specific code section. It's 124, 501, and then subsection B, height of first floor. I'll let Brett get it, because it's a really specific question that I had noticed. So there's height of first floor, section B, I mean, if you have it. And then there's sub three there, specific to the 5A and 5B zoning districts. No, I think you have it. So it says, "The first floor height shall be the height of the sidewalk at the building's primary entrance," which is, I assume, the lobby at the corner of Forest and Windsor.
I'm going to switch to A3.
Correct.
This illustrates that the lobby is at the sidewalk elevation, and we set it at the highest sidewalk elevation on the property.
So specific to 5A and 5B zoning districts, it says, "First floor height shall be the height of the sidewalk at the building's primary entrance," which that is there. But then it goes on to say, "For sloping sites, all building entrances in facades shall be located at the height of the sidewalk." So when I'm looking at exhibit, say, A11, that's over there that we just put up, and there are one, two, three, four entrances along Forest that are all elevated up from the sidewalk. They're not at sidewalk level. There are exterior stairs.
I would not, they would be individual unit entrances. Really have long building entrances.
Well, it's not the building's primary entrance, but it's, I mean, that is one way to look at it. Another way to look at it is that's an entrance to the building.
You cannot access the building proper from that. That is a private, that's no different than a balcony door that somebody may have. That would be a, I would not call that an entry-up building entrance.
What do you think was the intent of having that section in the code?
I think the intent is that the building relates to the existing sidewalk. But I think the realities of this building is the primary building entrance for building tenants, visitors, things like that, the fobbed entrance, you're going to walk into a vestibule, you're going to have to ring the bell, someone's going to have to come down and let you in, things like that will happen at the street. I think there's a reality to first-floor residential living in a municipality similar to Norbert. I think people don't want to actually physically live on the street level. As you walk along a pedestrian scale and you look into somebody's window, it's not the most desirable. So that's why row homes and houses like that are lifted up on a little bit of a plinth, and they're created anywhere from kind of 36 to 42 inches above street level to create that privacy element.
Can you tell me, looking at the form and estimate of Spots, how high is the first floor down there? How far lifted up above street level is that there?
I'm purely going to guess to try to give you information, because I don't know. But by looking at this, I would say it's somewhere in the neighborhood of six or seven feet.
Yeah, I mean, that's sort of like that, Mr. Veklasky, I was getting at. And I think that this provision of the zoning code does speak to exactly what you said, sort of the desire that the building, or buildings in this zoning district communicate with the street. And that seven-foot wall is definitely, I think it's a challenge to that.
And you can see why we are proposing stepping planters, so that these planters, as the street slopes, the planters will slope almost to have little seat walls along there, so that the urban design or the character of the building respond to the street while still at the same time, I mean, it's not practical for us necessarily to step the building down with having habitable parking space below. So we're going to have to keep a certain plinth. We're trying to respond to that with the addition of these planters.
I asked Mr. Yon about that in November as well. I asked, what would it take to lower the elevation of the parking garage itself? You'd have to, you know, have a ramp. And he pointed out that you would lose some portion of the first floor in that rear corner. You would need to carve it out in order to provide clearance for cars. But the trade-off would be that the building could be significantly shorter, and there could be less of a blank wall on the low elevation side of the building. So it wouldn't be a seven-foot sheer wall, it might be a four-foot wall, something more in line with the, these sort of urban design townhome that you just spoke to, you know, 36, 47 inches. So I asked Mr. Yon that in November, and I'm going to bring it up again to ask if that is a design consideration that you would consider revisiting the practicalities of that. That is, but maybe it was too much of a statement of a question, but I've thrown out those questions and asked if you'd consider that, and just to follow, and give a response as to feasibility of that.
If this was a mixed-use building, I think my answer would be different than if this is a primarily residential building. While we're going to make every effort possible for this building not to feel like there's a very large wall facing the street, and that's what we're attempting to do, having the residential shielded from the pedestrian level, I think, is beneficial. We're working with existing curb lines and urban environments, so there's nothing we can do. We can't change the street elevations. So we're working with the lowest possible point off of Windsor to get down into that. There's certain realities to how much we can slope, how much we can get down. So that's really what's setting our building from that elevation up. So we can look into it further, but we'll make every attempt possible to keep that as low as it possibly can while still creating a positive residential experience for the units there on the corner.
I just have two questions. One is about the planters on Forest, which I can see on A3 or that one too. What assurances can you give us that there's ample space for pedestrians in the right-of-way? In other words, that those retaining walls and planters are not in any way encroaching in a kind of permanent way into the right-of-way?
I'm pointing to A11. We went through the six-foot clearance that is provided on A11. That yellow swath has a six-foot clear space that's unencumbered by anything else other than just clear space. Our actual sidewalk dimension is 18 inches wider than that. So we have a full six feet that we're showing on A11 that is outside of the stepped planter dimension.
Okay. So my other question was about the bike racks and the electric charging stations. Do you have enough numbers for those? How many electric charging spots you would have? Could you, down the line, expand that number as you have more users? You know, will that be a possibility? And similarly with the bike racks? Is it expandable?
The developers of the project actually have electric vehicles. They're very sensitive to that. We would start with two EV charging stations within the building, which actually is very high for the number of units, comparable from the amount of stations versus the number of units. It's very high in proportion to the amount of work we do. Usually, it's two per every 100 units or whatnot, so this is actually very high with that. And the bike stations, I think we're going to start off with 20 bike stations within the building. And outside of it, we would have guest-based, bike parking at the corner here, or quick in-and-out kind of parking here to ride into town, ride up to Whole Foods, whatever, you can park your bike here. But at night, you would take it into a secured, you know, bike storage area. For actual logistics and leasing and things like that, if there is a need for additional bike storage, the developers will provide that as needed to keep that as a...
And for both of those, you'd be willing to make those a condition of approval?
Correct.
For both, a minimum of two electric car charging stations and the interior and exterior bike racks, as you discussed.
Correct.
Thank you.
Could you just describe what you're doing? I noticed that there are six tree grains on Forest Avenue. What's happening on Windsor Avenue?
We'll get into that in the development. We're showing conformance, that this is how we would provide conformance for that. That's really a land development process, but you have a landscape, you know, component of your form-based zoning code, and we will satisfy that as needed.
Are you referring to height of tree or number? Do you have to know the number of trees that would be along that?
I can tell you that your requirement states, "Street trees provide every 30 linear feet of all frontage." So along Forest, in this exhibit, there's one, two, three, four, five, six, as you indicated. Windsor, I'm not sure the dimension, whatever the dimension is divided by 30 feet. Now, if you remember, we have a much more substantial setback on Windsor, the 25 feet, so we do have much more room to plant.
So, any other questions from council members? Mr. Waco, did you have anything you wanted to add at this point?
I did. Just a few clarification questions. The plans previously shown, this may be better for Mr. Yon, again, showed a, I believe, a six-foot setback on what would be the side yard, where the code actually requires zero. Is that correct?
Correct.
Would you be willing to make it a condition of approval, that that six-feet setback be provided as indicated on the plans shown?
And just a clarification, a technicality, if you will. We would keep the west walls of the building six feet. If you look at this...
I guess the plan that's being shown...
The plan being shown, yeah. We would not get any closer to any property line than any building shown on that plan. And the reason I say that is, when you get to, these are all six feet as you face west, but as you dip in on those little indentations, those are closer than six feet. So the walls that face west, yes, six feet.
But as indicated on the plan, that would not be changed.
Right. And we would not get those little indentations any closer than they're shown on the plan either.
Now, I want to talk about that retaining wall and the beds that are there. You'd agree with me that they are in the public right-of-way by, what, about a foot, two feet? And you've testified as to the reason why you believe that they are important to the project and how they contribute to the streetscape. From a borough's perspective, if somebody's even approaching the right-of-way just a little bit, we'd want to make sure that that is adequately addressed. You'd agree, if this is approved as a condition, that building in that right-of-way will have no vesting rights to that right-of-way for this building as a condition?
Yes.
And you'd agree that anything that's in the right-of-way, be it the steps, or be it any walls or beds, if the borough needed access permanently or temporarily to that area, we would have that access and that you, at your cost, would have to take that apart?
Yes.
And if it was permanent, you would have to redo or figure out a way to perhaps make those entryways into balconies, or something along those lines. Is that correct?
Yes, they're there for steps, they're not there for necessity.
And would you agree that you will remain responsible for maintaining or repairing anything that's constructed within that right-of-way? So if the concrete started to crumble, you will make sure that that is repaired?
Yes.
And that you will assume all liability or responsibility related to anything that you are building within that right-of-way?
Yes.
Would you agree that you're not going to prohibit the public from, say, using something that's in that right-of-way? For example, if there's a parade and little kids want to sit on that wall, you're not going to say, hey, that's my wall. You're not going to put up any signs that says, you know, stay off my wall, or something along those lines. You understand what I'm saying? That's the public right-of-way that will remain public from the approval.
We're not giving that up.
Right. And with the plantings that are put in that right-of-way, would you agree that you'll maintain those plantings in or near the right-of-way?
Yes.
So to make sure that, you know, if they die, if they need to be repaired in any way, if Borough Council doesn't like the way that looks, you'll reasonably satisfy the plantings in that area?
Yes.
And that you're willing to enter into an agreement with the borough that will address these conditions that we can then report against the property, so any future owners would also be responsible for these same issues?
Yes.
That's all I have.
All right, thank you. So now will be an opportunity, everyone has waited very patiently, for the public to ask specific questions to either the engineer or the architect. We will, at the conclusion of those specific questions, have an opportunity for public comment, which is more general, but I would ask that you have specific questions. This court is only so long, so I'm actually going to set up right over here. If you could come up and state your name and address for the record. You may have to spell your last name for the court reporter, and you can ask your question. And the question itself will be delivered to three of us.
I live at 208 Forest Avenue.
Please spell your last name.
So, you know, first of all, I just want to say, as a homeowner on Forest, I'm pretty jazzed about this. I think it's going to be a great addition, and it's going to really create some vibrancy to our area and probably increase my value of my home. So thanks for that. So thanks for that. I'm imagining the reason that the efficiency of the building didn't come up is because there's probably already built into the code some minimum standards that you have to meet. I do, I really appreciate the bike parking and the electric charging stations, and I just want to toss out that I know that there are people, developers, within the city of Philadelphia who are building developments now that go well beyond the minimum standards for efficiency. And given that the parts per million of CO2 in the atmosphere today was 408, which was last seen on this planet 306 million years ago. And I very much hope that your building will be here for at least another 50 or 100 years. I would ask you to look at some of the kinds of extra efficiency standards that people are doing, and I think that the expense of those are often, in a new build, offset by being able to put in smaller mechanicals. So that's my hope. I imagine that it's something that you can be required to do, but I throw that out. Thank you.
Will there be other efficiency items of efficiency at this time?
Ma'am, could you just define... Efficiency is a broad term. I'm not sure I understand. You mean energy efficiency?
There's probably an energy star rating that you're required to meet.
So actually, one of the benefits to the owners and to your question right now is that the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania, as of October 1st, has adopted the 2015 code. So within that 2015 code, when this building is drawn and constructed, we're going to be required to provide the energy efficiency and all the code requirements of the, one of the newest codes. The city of Philadelphia has actually adopted the 2018 code, but we're mandated by the state here, so we will be substantially more increased, or substantially increased beyond the 2009 code, which was in effect until October 1st.
Bill Manginelli, M-A-N-G-I-N-E-L-L-I, 223 Dudley. Can you hear that all right? So one thing I do want to say is I want to thank you for continually reminding us that you are designing to an urban environment, because I think it's important for everybody to understand that that's kind of the basis of this code. I have two questions. One, the rendering looks a little misleading to me. Maybe it's not, but I know when I drive around Norbert and I see three-story buildings, they look like four-story buildings, because at least six feet or so of the below first-floor elevation is out of the ground. And I think somebody brought this up, that it was going to be, what, six feet? So essentially, I'm looking at the rendering, and it looks like a four-story building, but I do think when you get to the other end where the grade is lower, there is going to be at least, what, six feet before you get to the first floor. So almost a full story below the four stories. Is that correct?
The grade is going to vary from the corner of Forest and Windsor, from zero till somewhere in that range over here, closest to the spot. And as you go down Windsor, it will actually be perceived down Windsor as the entrance to the garage is almost another story.
Okay, so maybe you can just state the elevation at the lowest end of the sidewalk and end of the first-floor elevation, so you know the footage. But I do have a follow-up question, so you can answer that one now. I don't want to stop my questioning to get followed. Last time I was here, I was under the impression that in order to get approval, there were six waivers to the code for the conditional use being asked, one of which was that the code required the parking entrance to not face the street, and you were asking for it, a waiver? I don't want to put words in anybody's mouth. To face the street? And I just, I understood that was because if you had to meet the code, then you'd lose some space in the building. But I was under the impression there were six of these, and I haven't heard any discussion of any of them tonight. So if you could enumerate those six and explain them, I'd appreciate that.
All right, so two questions. One about the grade level.
What grade, elevation, and first floor?
So the lowest point on the site is on the western corner of Windsor Avenue, and so down there, the sidewalk grade is around elevation 278, and so the residential level is at 288. So that's where, you said, you'll see the extra store, because we basically need that to get into the garage.
Right, so a little bit of five-story. Go ahead, I'm sorry.
And then in terms of the other requests, so we have four potential waivers listed on the plan. Now, those waivers are from the subdivision and land development ordinance, which don't really apply yet as part of this conditional use. They aren't approved here, to my understanding. They'll be approved as part of the land development approval, which will follow the conditional use.
Well, we're not, we haven't discussed the waivers, so I don't think it's accurate to say that they will be approved.
We would ask you to consider granting those waivers at land development.
You're right. Do you want me to go through each of those?
I know we were asked to enumerate before and explain them, so we understand what's the request.
So the first is subdivision land development ordinance, section 113-8b4, requiring profiles of existing roads adjacent to the track. So that's just asking for a profile of the roads. I could do that, but to me, it doesn't accomplish anything. To me, that's more appropriate in a subdivision where you might have new streets and you're trying to connect to those new streets. You make sure you don't have drainage problems, as opposed to this, which is a redevelopment with one driveway access, which is where there's an existing one now. So that's something we could comply with, but I don't see any value in. And we did request that waiver on a similar project, and we're granted the waiver. The next one listed is subdivision land development ordinance, section 113-17a2, requiring a minimum two-way driveway paving width of at least 24 feet to permit a minimum two-way driveway, a minimum 22-foot two-way driveway width. So I believe the subdivision land development ordinance is a little antiquated here, where you revised the zoning ordinance for the new form-based zoning code, which has a maximum one-way driveway width of 12 feet and a maximum two-way driveway width of 22 feet at the street. And so in terms of zoning, we can't go any wider than 22 feet at the street. We can't meet the 24. And we've continued the 22 feet under the building in some places, at the closest, in other places, it's wider. And so that's the reason for that request.
And I should add to that, that when the form-based code was enacted, there was a specific provision addressing, I believe, that provision and maybe the other one here, that the form-based code standards superseded those exact standards in the subdivision land development ordinance. So that was something that council specifically knew about and expressed the desire to have that replaced with the form-based code provisions.
Mr. Walker, thank you. That's similar to number three, subdivision land development ordinance, or not number three, I'm sorry. Read number four. Subdivision land development ordinance, section 113-18e, requiring a minimum two-way aisle width of 25 feet for 90-degree parking to permit a 22-foot two-way driveway aisle. So it's a similar request of 22 feet instead of 25, which is what the subdivision land development ordinance requires. Number three is subdivision land development ordinance, section 113-18e, requiring that only 30% of parking spaces may be 9 by 18 feet to permit all spaces to be 9 feet by 18 feet. The subdivision code says that the other 70% are supposed to be 10 by 20 feet, and so we're asking for the waiver for them all to be 9 by 18, which was a similar request on another project that was granted. The two other noted items of required zoning approvals, one is that is per 124-301c3b requires conditional use approval.
124 what?
Oh, I'm sorry.
I got to get it down.
You're better if I show you.
No, no, it's safe.
124-301c3b requires conditional use approval for the construction of an apartment building in the 5A district, and so that's the approval request that we're asking for right now, is the conditional use approval. And the last is per section 124-601b2f2, requires a special exception to locate the garage entrance in the ground in the second lot layer where the garage door is set back no less than 10 feet from the facade. So I think that's the one you got into a little more depth on. The code is layered in terms of how they, in terms of preferred parking scenarios. And so some are permitted by right, some are permitted by special exception, and that's what this one is. And so we do meet all the requirements of that special exception section. So if you read that section, 124-601b2f2, it says that the garage door opening has to be set back at least 10 feet from the front facade, and we meet those requirements.
So it doesn't have to face the other way?
That's a different section of the code that says that it would have to, that it would have to be set back 25 feet from a property line and face a different direction. That's the more preferred option, but that's not what we have here.
So you asked for a waiver for that, or is that really the option?
It's not, that's where you have the option, and we're requesting special exception approval for this one. My recollection is that other one is also special exception approval.
Thank you. Can you just go over here, just to transcript, have access to the transcript after?
Sure. The transcript takes a little bit of time to become available, but at that time, it would be available in the borough files, and I guess it could be posted on the website.
There are Pennsylvania laws, actually, that prohibit transcripts from being published in that way, so we'd have to talk with the court reporter for that. There may be a fee associated with that, based upon it being workhorse.
So could you post on the website how we would get access to it?
Yes, we can.
If you want access, just see me afterwards. I'll give you the number.
Thank you. Yes, ma'am.
Hi, my name is Molly Marshalack. If I can spell that for you. It's M-A-R-S-H-A-L-E-C-K, and I'm at 89 Windsor Avenue. So I've got two separate questions. My first is regarding the setbacks to the facade. So we've talked a lot about that tonight, but I understand there's also going to be balconies at this building. Do you consider those part of the facade?
Do I consider the balconies part of the facade?
Yes.
I consider the facade of the building, the vertical building wall, the facade. In this instance, if you look here on A6, the Windsor Avenue, the facade goes up three stories, steps back 10 to 12 feet and comes back up. On the fourth floor, that 10 to 12 feet becomes a balcony, so it's a roof that you can walk on.
So does that comply with the setbacks or the balcony?
That's actually, that goes beyond the requirement. We could have a four-story wall there. We are choosing to step back the fourth floor in certain instances to afford them balconies, but it is not required. It is in excess of the...
So the balcony is not protruding out over?
No. It's recessed backward. We're actually stepping the building back to allow for balconies.
Thank you. My second question relates to the parking. So I understand there's a garage underneath. This may be more of a question to the owner, but you may know as well. Is parking going to be included in the rent? Will the renters be charged for that parking?
Is he still under oath?
Well, in reality, one way or another, somebody pays for the parking. We haven't really decided yet whether we're going to include it in the rent or make it separate, but no one other than a resident is going to be allowed to park in the garage. So it's for the residents, and it's in our best interest to keep the garage full, so however we can figure out to do that, that's what we're going to do.
And you agree to make that a condition, that renters in your building be allowed parking?
Yes, that we wouldn't allow outside parking, that it's for renters.
Okay, thank you.
Hi, my name is Todd Bressi. I live at 300 North S. Examen.
I'm sorry, can you say it again?
Sure. My name is Todd Bressi, B-R-E-S-S-I. I live at 300 North S. Examen, and I'm the chair of the Norbert Land Development Commission. I have, I'd like to ask three questions, but they're specifically related to the letter that we wrote to council after we reviewed your project. I may. We made two recommendations that we called advisory recommendations. We did not specifically recommend the missed conditions, but these were things that we asked you to consider. So I'd like to ask about those and ask if you've considered them further since we met with you. The first one has to do with housing diversity. In our letter, we did commend you for the diversity of units and price points and sizes that you described for us when you met with us, but we asked you to consider if you could provide even more diversity than that. And I think what we really meant was, could you consider including more of the smaller units, the efficiencies, really? And I'm wondering if you've considered that and what your thoughts are on that.
So we've commissioned a market study to sort of tell us, you know, what someone's view of what the market is. We've been presented with four different scenarios. It appears that in this market in general, that what people really want is larger units, not smaller units, which is surprising to us. But there's a lot of trade-down in this area, so people who sell their homes, bigger homes, want to move into an apartment, don't want to move into the city, would like to stay around here, but can't find units that are big enough for what they desire. So we're still in the process of working through the market study and trying to figure out what the optimal configuration is. So we have been thinking about it, and we're going to continue thinking about it. We haven't, you know, as Mike says, we've just put the essence of units together. We really haven't defined what the units look like yet, but we're going to work on them.
My second question has to do with ground floor uses on Forest Avenue. We understand as an apartment building, you're required to have apartments on the ground floor. But we requested that you reconsidered the Montgomery County planning commission's recommendation that some of the ground floor space on Forest Avenue be designed so it could be converted to non-residential use in the future. In particular, consider a second residential lobby area on the southeast corner of the building as a space that could potentially be repurposed in the future. Now, we've had a lot of conversations with you, and we understand your opinions about the retail market and the potential for other kinds of uses there. You may not be aware, but in some of the zoning code amendments that council will be looking at this month, there's a proposal to allow some portion of apartment buildings to have commercial use on the ground floor. That would expand your options for what you could do on the ground floor from what exists now, because in the planning commission, at least, we recommend to council more options be provided. So I'm wondering, in light of our further refinement of the code and our request in our letter, if you consider whether or not there could be any space on the ground floor that could either be designed so that it could be repurposed for non-residential use in the future, or whether that option would be interesting to you to have a smaller commercial storefront in your building?
So... No, I got it. Your last point threw me just for one second. Let me answer before you said about the storefront. So the form-based zoning code has very specific requirements for mixed use and frankly, the design of storefronts. If I take that whole requirement out of the picture for one second, the conversations we've had since we were at the planning commission were, we feel that in the current orientation of the building, the current exterior steps, things like that, it does present an opportunity for live-work units. Because these are two-story elements, theoretically, you could have an accessible entrance coming through your lobby and get up into there as needed, but any patrons could come and go from a set of steps to a law office, a doctor office, things like that, and somebody could live on the second floor, because all of these units are still accessed from the corridor. So look, the corner, the opposite corner from Windsor and Forest, the secondary lobby, I think personally would be very problematic. we would be required to do. So I think they're both working against us, but the existing orientation of the building and what we've set up, we think, is flexible enough that in the future, if the owners decided that a commercial use would be appropriate à la a professional services type use, not necessarily a restaurant, things like that, that a live-work setup could be accomplished in this current setup.
Thank you. Just one correction. If you had a small amount of commercial, the first 2,500 square feet would be exempt from parking requirements, so it wouldn't increase your parking. I've been told I'm out of time, so I will thank the council. Take more time, see you.
Thank you. Phil Zak, 237 Dudley Avenue. Can you say your last name? B-Z-A-K. First, I'd just like to thank the owner for investing in Narberth. When there are a lot of ways, I know he wants to make money, but there's a lot of ways he could make money, and he's chosen Narberth, so again, I thank you for that. I have two questions. During your presentation or your testimony, you had mentioned that the Forest Avenue sidewalk was six feet. I didn't hear how, why the Windsor.
Does Forest low with six feet?
Sidewalk was six feet.
That was, that was an illustrative plan to show, but we will, we will show conformance with that.
Sure.
On Windsor, we have a much more substantial building setback of 25 feet, so we have a lot more room to work with over there. So we would be able to have a minimum of six-foot clear space working through there, and there's no problem.
Understood. Understood.
And you will have that at least?
We will have that, but that will be flushed out during land abode.
Sure. My second question is, how do you intend to handle the mechanics? I understand you have a trash room, but the mechanics are getting the trash out of the building. How's that going to work?
So the process will be, there's going to be a trash chute within the building. So on all four floors, there'll be access from a chute. The chute will come down into the trash room. Whether or not there's a compactor or not will work out, whether or not we have physical space, or depending, it's all driven by how many pickups they're going to have during a week's time. All right, that's kind of the driving force. But what happens on trash day is, there is a retaining wall that continues along here that basically hides the trash room door from visible sight off of Windsor. On trash day, and I believe the code says something about no more than 24 hours prior or whatnot, you can bring your trash out. So they will bring their, you know, two-yard dumpsters out, align them behind kind of the retaining wall here, and as the trash truck comes up, the trash service is not, they actually cannot come in your building, but as long as they're sitting outside, they will come and roll them up, lift them up, put them back down, and put them here, and then maintenance will come back and push them within, back into the building.
So the owner has to pay for his own trash service?
Yes.
Thank you.
And you'd be willing to make that a condition, that the trash remain inside the building until, in line with the code, until trash day? And that, and that it's a private trash hall?
That is a private, right.
Thank you.
Hi, David Schoenhard, 131 Marion Avenue.
Can you say your last name?
Can you tell us, please, what is the total visual height of the northwest corner of the building on Windsor that is adjacent to the two-story white Victorian house? He's staring at you.
Visual height, plus or minus 49 to 50 feet.
50 feet, okay. And how tall is it to the top of that stair tower?
An additional eight feet.
So you're up about 58 feet at that point?
Correct.
And since you did not draw the Victorian house next to this, although you did draw spots, would it be reasonable for you to draw the neighbor?
Sure. If council or anybody saw value.
Have you reviewed with the fire marshal, fire access around the side and backsides of this building?
No.
Are you aware that more than 50% of this building is non-accessible for fire department access?
I am aware, yes.
Well, your entire west side, your entire south side and the courtyard are non-accessible.
I would argue, how do you define accessible?
You can't get equipment back there.
I think you could get a hose.
In a six-foot space?
There's 15 feet on the opposite side.
But you've got a six-foot space on the west side of the building.
Understood, but if I could get, that it's 75%, if I can get the hose on the, on the rear yard setback, so now we're talking about 25%, not 50.
Right. Were you intending to review this with the fire marshal?
We will.
He can send it back through a certain sized space.
We will submit.
Otherwise, it's a danger to them.
We will submit what's required within the borough requirements.
Interesting. Now, you had mentioned that this was an underground parking garage? Is it an underground parking garage, or is actually considered an open garage that has natural air ventilation on the west and south sides of the building?
We have not done that calculation yet, but what the, the building code requires is that opposite sides have the required amount of ventilation. So I have not done that, but I can tell you that, based on my professional opinion at this point, I don't know if it will be determined as, or classified as an open garage for the IBC or not. It may, it may require mechanical ventilation.
So if it is mechanical ventilation, would you consider then bringing the south side of the building back up to grade rather than digging it down to the, to the garage level?
We'll get into that further in building design.
Okay. Thank you.
Patrick Land, L.A., N24 Narberth Park. Two questions. First one, will the owner agree that there will be no student housing in the building as one of the conditions?
I don't think legally you can say. For the Fair Housing Act, who can't or who can't live in here?
We're not going to invoke that condition.
But I don't think that's legal.
You will comply with all the occupancy.
Oh, it'll be occupancy, these are, these are to be, those are market rate apartments. If a student decides to rent an apartment, they have students somewhere, legally you cannot tell them they can't rent here. It is not going to be marketed as student housing. I can say that.
Okay. Second question, the exit to the garage, cars will be coming from below street grade, below sidewalk grade?
Correct.
Do you know the angle of that ramp yet?
5%.
And, so they will be coming up on an angle, there'll be walls on both sides, correct?
Uh, no.
Which side of that wall?
Neither.
Neither?
There will be a wall that's perpendicular to it.
Okay.
But there's no retain, the grate actually falls up, it's an existing condition today. So we will just be going down a 5% slope right there, there's no retaining wall over there.
Here's what I'm worried about. What is the vision of a car coming up this ramp to exit the garage to pedestrians on the sidewalk?
It's, I'm sorry, what is the what?
What can they see? Have you figured out what a driver can see, because there are children who walk down that sidewalk all the time, who may not be paying attention to the sound of a car coming up this ramp?
Any worse or better than the existing condition that it has today.
This is wise, Rob.
This is wise. It's setback 25 feet. The building, the garage entrance, 25 feet back from Windsor Avenue.
Right.
No, no, 15.
25.
Sorry, 35 feet.
35. And in front of the building, what, this surface of the building?
25 feet.
Thanks.
Good evening. My name is Steve Gallager, this is late for me. 213, uh, Gallager, G-A-L-L-A-G-H-E-R, 213 North Narberth Avenue. And I'm not sure if my question's to the architect, the engineer, or, or council, but the impact of 56 units would be about 162 cars for each person, and how many children are going to be to lower Marion School is going to impact on my, my taxes. Can someone calculate, you don't tell me anything, but can someone tell me the impact that's going to have with, with my school taxes?
Have any studies been done pertaining to how many children a development like this usually will, will bring in?
For this specific project, no study has been done. I can say on many of our other projects, we do a tremendous amount of studies showing the impact on school systems, and it is relatively low as far as the number of physical students that will be there.
Well, you have to do it in a lower Marion, because Philadelphia dumps out into lower Marion, the number of apartments is just staggering. So maybe we could go to more one unit, or refit because the number of schoolchildren and the density in Narberth is a real issue. Thanks.
Thank you.
My name is Anna Stillwell, S-T-I-L-L-W-E-L-L, 520 North Essex. So my understanding was this ordinance was passed in September to allow the fourth floor on, I believe, at least these two corners of Windsor and Forest, and whatever, between Essex and Narberth Avenue. So when they allowed the fourth floors, they said they were doing that, they weren't doing it on Havreford Avenue on the south side because of shade blockage in the winter would cause ice and whatever on the street. But this is also on the south side. So I guess my question is, they said that they were allowing, they're allowing the fourth floor in the south side of Windsor because Windsor is wider than Havreford Avenue. Okay, so when you did this whole architectural plan, did you measure the width of Windsor Avenue?
The physical width of the street?
Yeah, and we were told that we couldn't have four floors on the south side of Narberth, of Havreford Avenue because of shading in the winter, but this is also on the south side, so I'm just, I guess you would know what the difference in.
I would just, one thing, it was actually the 16th of May that the fourth, fourth story was adopted, not September.
Okay.
Just for the record, but I, I cannot necessarily speak to that, I can, I can speak to our process with the planning commission, which I believe something was mentioned about a shadow study being prepared when the fourth story was being considered, and I believe that had something to do with where the fourth floor was being adopted and not being adopted. I, I don't know the process, we were not involved in it at all during that time, but that is my understanding of, of where it was evaluated, where it wasn't. I believe the planning commission or somebody on the planning commission did that study.
Well, I think my, my understanding was that they said it was okay, I think it was Mr. Brower, because Windsor is wider than Havreford Avenue. So I guess my question to you is, how much width at the highest elevation of Windsor, how much width is there that would be possibly blocking this in the winter to cause ice and problems in the winter?
I don't think there is.
Okay.
I mean, we're substantially set, we're, you know, like I said, we're 25 feet, that's our setback. But, you know, I don't, you know, the sun's going to rise and set in the west, so it's going to work, you know, three-quarters of the way around the building, so.
Okay, and then my second question from Mr. Kagan. I, I couldn't hear when Mr. Bressi was thanking you for the different price points, I couldn't hear what you said, but have you since then come up with actual rent prices that you're going to be charging?
Well, we've done a market study, but we haven't, we're, we're so early in the process right now, we really, that's kind of the last thing we're going to do, not the first thing we're going to do. We have an idea, I'm not going to.
But I mean, you said last month when we met, that in order for you to get financing, you needed the fourth floor. You couldn't get financing without the fourth floor. Is that correct?
I don't think we would have done the project without the fourth floor.
Okay, well, I, I kind of remember you saying finance. So I guess a lot of us are wondering how you could get financing if we didn't know what you're going to charge.
We have, we have a range, well, because we don't have financing. We're, the range of, the range of unit prices is probably going to start off somewhere $1,300 or $1,400 and may go up over $3,000 if, for the biggest unit we have.
So $1,300 for the 500 square foot, and then going up.
And again, though, we're not the other.
I'm not worried about that. All right, thank you.
Larry Rubin, 200, are you B-I-N, 200 North Wood Avenue. The exit you have with the materials are very nice, and may be consistent with what is in the area, but to me, this building is so inconsistent with the beautiful Queen Anne homes and the structures surrounding it that really make Narberth very special. There's nothing in this, in your plans that reflect the history of the area. I can remember when they built a Rite Aid on Montgomery Avenue, they incorporated the design of the Friends Meeting House to keep consistent with the area. Now, I know you can't build a four-story multi-unit project and make it in Queen Anne style, but it should in some way be consistent and reflect the, the history of Narberth and that area. I think the reason why there's so many people here also is that this is the first time, I think, over 50 years, that a project of this size and this mass has come before the Narberth Board and the commissions. Also, I'd like to know where the moving vans will come in and out when people move in, if they'll be on the street, or they won't be on the street. And also, the in and out of the driveway, and can we see where that is on the diagrams?
You can see where it is on the diagrams in the parking level plan?
Certainly more visible.
I'm not, I'm not sure which you're looking for. This is the garage entrance right here.
Is there a larger, you have a larger board with that, with that reference?
I mean, I.
Aaron, no one's been able to see these plans in the audience. Can we take five minutes where we could look at this, take a five-minute break, and then let everyone look at it before we get more questions?
Yes, if you have any questions before we're public comment.
The moving van situation was, I know that's a, always comes up as a problem, and I remember council fought with that with the neighborhood development, that they had to have a place for moving vans to go and for fire apparatus to go. It's very important, the gentleman spoke about fire apparatus coming in there. You're not talking about a hose, you're talking about firemen who possibly will be saving people that live in that building.
Is that a question?
So the question, I guess, would be, do you have a place where a moving van can be if someone is moving to and from this building?
I think it'd be no different than if somebody was moving in, in the office building currently.
Or a house.
Or, or a house. I mean, I would assume that would be on the street.
Alexander Ting, 117 Wood South Avenue. Okay, well, I understand, you know, as a developer, you want to maximize what you can do with the property, and I totally understand that. I think a lot of the problems I'm seeing are really with the code, and what I'm going to ask is more in line with what, what will you do, or what are you willing to do to make this building a little bit more, fit in more with the architecture of Narberth, which is sort of what the previous gentleman was addressing. What I'm seeing, okay, so I'm seeing that the four-story setbacks are evenly distributed through the building, and I guess what I'm asking is, have you considered designing a building that's less symmetrical, so that the side that's, that's, the end that's facing Windsor, I mean, yes, Windsor, is lower and has more of a three-story height? And then the, the four-story setbacks go more towards the downtown area of Narberth. I mean, I'm personally not really happy about four- I mean, I'm personally not really happy about four stories anywhere in Narberth, but given that this is the code and this is what you can do, I realize you're going to be doing it. So I'm asking you to consider a more asymmetrical plan that maybe echoes some of the roof lines of the houses across the street on Windsor on that side and becomes something a little bit different. And I don't, I don't think it should be, I think it should look unified, obviously, not strange, you know, in its form, but builds up to a little bit higher height on the other end of the building. And the other, the other, you can answer both of these at once, but the other question I have is, have you considered, this relates to what Michelle was talking about, with the, the height of the underground sort of level that, you know, goes up pretty far above the ground level on the side of spots. Have you considered making the entrance to the parking garage on Forest, which means that the front of the building, I guess, would be on Windsor because the lobby is on the corner, so, and there are two, technically two facades. And the reason I'm saying that is because we have, in our new code, we have a, now, we're not allowed to have a front-facing garage on a house in a residential neighborhood. And so why not have the garage on Forest where there's businesses and have the, the Forest, the Windsor elevation much more residential in appearance without the garage? And also, the other...
I'm going to call fire.
Oh, can I just say some, one thing?
Finish your sentence.
Okay, so the, the other reason I'm suggesting that is because the, the ground is lower on that side so that you have a natural entrance to the garage.
Okay. Thank you. You'll have a chance to answer it.
I'm going to do the best I can to answer the, I'll go, last question to first. The, the access to the parking garage is driven 100% by topography, where we can physically get into the lower level most efficiently. And simply, the lowest elevation on Windsor is four or five feet lower than the lowest elevation on Forest. So it was just, it's just a numbers game to how we could get in there. As far as your architectural question, I think I can just simply say, no, I have not looked at that.
Hi, Jean McFalls. I am at 24 Narberth Park. Just a couple of quick questions for you.
Do you have your license?
Oh, sure. M-C-F-A-L-L-S.
Thank you.
Sure. So this is for the architect. Is this going to be a wood frame construction apartment building?
It is not going to determine what it would be, but it could be.
These are all the ones that are like the fire safety issues that were raised by the prior architect, right? Because aren't they more likely to have fire issues, the wood, the wood frame relative to the concrete construction apartment buildings?
I would not say wood frame buildings are more likely to have fire issues than any other types of buildings. If it is a wood frame building, there are requirements to ratings for exterior walls, demising walls, corridor walls, all that have different rating requirements for them. So they will be fire rated in some method.
Second question. When you guys went in front of the planning commission back in November, you had some encroachment into the pedestrian right-of-way on the first floor entrances out of the apartment buildings. Has that been resolved?
That is what we spoke about with Exhibit A-11. And this shows the one condition that council has requested us to consider, which would be the steps and retaining walls and planters that would happen within the street right-of-way, not the pedestrian right-of-way, the street right-of-way of Forest Avenue, that they do impede a few feet into there to help the urban design aesthetic while still keeping a six-foot clear space for your sidewalk, that if they were to ever need to be removed, that, and there's more components to the, the suggestion, but the owner would remove those at, at his own cost.
So last question, and I think your attorney spoke to this. So in the code, it's not specifically clear what constitutes a front yard when you are on a corner property. I guess you said that it says something along the lines of wherever there are more houses, although it seems that that probably holds for most of Narberth, but not really when you're downtown because the planning commission pointed out there are actually more buildings along Forest, not Windsor. I mean, there are more houses on Windsor, but there are more buildings on Forest. And they thought that it was more in keeping with what council wanted when they passed the ordinance, that Forest be the primary frontage, and they recommended that you consider changing it to the, the primary frontage, and I was wondering if that's been addressed.
Our attorney spoke to the actual term that was used in the ordinance, which is homes, not buildings and not houses. So I think he spoke to that earlier. And I think we outlined our reasoning for, for selecting this. And I earlier spoke about dimensional requirements, offsets from existing neighboring properties, existing buildings that are built on the property line in the instance of spots, and why we would, we are suggesting that we would edit a more desirable setback instance than, than what the planning commission was, was suggesting.
Okay, so that is what the code says, but the planning commission did state that as part of the conditional use hearing, it was their interpretation, that actually council gets to decide what the appropriate frontage is.
Correct. We were just exhibiting what we think, why we think that is appropriate, but it is their decision.
My name is Janet Schmidt, S-C-H-M-I-D-T, and 114 Dudley. And I just wanted to mention, you said something about the moving vans not being an issue that would be any more than now, but that doesn't make any sense because 56 units. Initially, you're going to have 56 moving vans, and then when people, right?
I don't believe that it would be, I just, if somebody was moving in currently today, they would essentially park in the same location. I'm not saying the amount, the, or whatever, I'm just saying the physical location would not necessarily change. So it would be streets served.
56 initial people moving in, over a couple of years, probably, you'll get it filled. And then after that, someone moves out, that's one van, someone moves in, that's another van. So there's, there is an issue with people moving in and out. So how are you going to handle that? That's my first question, but I didn't feel like the last question was really answered. So potentially, you could have over 100 trucks in and out, well, you won't have that much turnover, but, you know. Secondly, I just want to get my three quick questions. Parking, how many spots do you have in the garage, estimated?
51.
Okay. So you're running the apartments for $1,000 to $2,000, so you'll probably have one, two to three people in these apartments. Typically, they'll have one or two cars. So where is all the excess cars going to go? And is the borough going to issue these permits to anyone who lives in these apartments like they do currently for tenants who live in Narberth?
I don't speak to the borough, I won't do. I will state that we are simply providing the maximum amount of parking we can, and we are applying that as the ordinance states that we can.
Yeah, I think it seems that you're following all the rules and ordinances and all that, which is, you know, but I'm asking both. What are these maybe additional 50 cars? Where are they going to be placed? And will they have permits, just like regular tenants do now in Narberth? Will you guys be issuing them permits to park on Dudley, Windsor, potentially 50 to 75 percent?
Well, I would, I'll see what I can answer. As it currently stands, these new residents of this new building, when it's constructed, would not receive parking, residential parking permits. Council is looking at the entire borough parking policy. That's going to be an effort that spans pretty much all of next year. I have no idea what that new policy is going to look like, so I don't want to promise you that that's never going to change. But right now, the law is they would not receive residential parking.
Okay, but where, on a practical note, are they going to park?
They're going to park in the garage under the building.
50 cars.
Yes.
The other 50. At these rental rates, you know, typically, people have one or two cars.
I'll, I'll offer something up. We do a lot of these types of projects. We do a lot of these types of projects in train-served urban pockets. I can tell you, without providing you backup, that generally, they represent about 0.9 cars per unit. That what you're not factoring is the people who don't have cars.
Which are, what type of people don't have cars?
I have three employees that live in Narberth without a car.
And what are they, are they elderly or are they students?
They're employees of my architecture, so they're not students. I would not classify them as elderly to their face. But I, I mean, what do you, what do you want, do you want me to give you their ages? Their twenties, thirties?
In every house in Narberth, does anyone live in a house?
First of all, we don't address the audience, and your time, your time is up.
Well, I had one more question.
I'm sorry. Time's up. Everyone gets the same, same chance. Thank you. I only count the time you're speaking, not the time that someone is answering.
Hi, Fred Bush, the USH, 105 Fox Hall Lane. So I think there's a, there's a lot of concern over how this project might change Narberth. I think that's what a lot of people are, are interested in. And it sounds like, as is the architect, that you've done a lot of these projects. Have you revisited the neighborhoods of some of the places where you've done these projects? What changes have you seen after your project is completed and after people are living there?
I, I can't say with any certainty we've ever done any study, anything I can provide back.
It's kind of personal experience.
My, my personal experience is it's nothing but positivity. I think the very first person who came up, if she's still here, I don't know, she spoke about rising property values and things like that. I think personally, in my experience, I can talk to many train-served and, and urban pocket boroughs and municipalities in the Philadelphia region we've worked in, putting apartment projects that range from 40-some units up to 200, 300-plus units, and it is very positive. So, and frankly, the lease-ups have been relatively fast.
My name is Haruka Karpel. Can you spell that? H-A-R-U-K-A. H-A-R-U-K-A, Karpel, K-A-R-P-E-L. 206 L., Terrence. Question is that the, how long does it take to complete the whole building?
Wait.
When you start construction?
I'd say this is somewhere in the range of 12 to 16 months, somewhere in that range.
16.
12 to 16.
Let's say 14.
Oh, no. And then a last person asked a similar question, but it's there, my understanding is that there is no specific difference based on your company's project. We can kind of picture what it's going to be.
I have no sense of...
So is there any neighborhood or location we can see, oh, this is what we can picture? 57-unit apartment in a middle...
57...
...middle of the Harvard business.
I can...
Narberth is very special, right?
I mean, we're, we're doing...
So like Ardmore, they're doing...
So, so we did the, we did 100 St. George's in Ardmore. It's a different product. It's a condominium project. It sits right on Montgomery Avenue, right next to Suburban Station or Suburban Square there, and the, the Ardmore Train Station. That is a, a residentially scaled, scaled four-story building. It's 31 units, but they're much larger.
Is it part of the Commerce Market?
Kind of, yes. It sits off of St. George's Lane, I guess, in Montgomery. We're working on multiple projects in Lower Marion that are about, that are under construction.
No, it's part of the...
Yeah, I mean, I, Allentown, if, if, you know, specific number of units or smaller scale projects I can point you to, I can point you to 160-unit building that just completed in Media, Pennsylvania. I mean, I don't, you know, there, I want to keep it very specific to the size and scale of this project, though.
That's something.
Sure.
Last question is more for Borough Council. Now, the four-story high building is allowed in the center of Narberth. Is that just for that particular commercial area or it might be anywhere in Narberth?
I will answer that. The four-story building is only permitted from basically Essex and Windsor down, we discussed this the other night, down to halfway towards...
Essex and that?
Not Grayling.
Grayling.
Halfway towards Grayling on Windsor. It's just one street on the south side only, that is the side that is closest to town, halfway between Essex and Dudley down to halfway between North Narberth and Grayling.
So it's only corner property. Oh, okay. So it's not going to...
Council did discuss raising the seat, the, the roof height for other buildings in the downtown, and that discussion was tabled to say it didn't go anywhere, and I don't believe there are any current plans to bring it back up.
So across the street from this property, also that flat apartment building, that can be also in there?
Thank you.
Okay. Anyone else with questions?
Could I? If no one else, I'll be last.
My name is Vince Delvalet, D-E-L-L-A-V-A-L-L-E. And I reside at 201 Forest Avenue. Just a couple of quick questions. The mechanicals, and I didn't look closely at the plans, I wasn't able to, where are they located on the site? Are they going to be rooftop?
It'll be worked out during the building construction plans. Our first thoughts would be they would be split systems with condensing units mounted on the roof.
And where would they be located? Send them in the roof in the central part?
Typically, what happens in these units is the, the air handling unit is, is roughly centered in the unit for efficiency, in the residential, actual apartment unit. So that's set back 15 to 20 feet back from each, each kind of edge of, of roof, roughly.
Okay, so...
And you'll have a collection of four condensing units because it's a stack that runs up for all four units that stack.
Does Narberth care about screening for that as a requirement?
They would not, they would not be visible, but we would, we would conform with any requirements. There's specific parapet height requirements and whatnot that, that we're conforming with, but I would say from a pedestrian scale, you would not see them. They're not, they're about two feet tall.
Okay. From a...
So I'll, I'll have a high view of it. So I would, I'm just asking if that could be... We're, we're maxed out at kind of the highest we can take the building and the parapets at this point per the, per the zoning code. So we're, we're doing everything we can to get as high as we can.
How far above does your sit, above that parapet, do you...
I'm not 100% sure what the parapet height is, but I can say a condensing unit is about two feet tall.
Okay. And then also on the plans, the telephone poles, are they taken into account on your plans?
On A-11, they are shown graphically on Forest as illustration, but they would be, they were taken into account for the six-foot clear space that happens along there. They would, they would be shown on our survey plan when we submit for land development and any requirements.
Great, thank you.
One last question for the, for the waitants. Jim Spears, P-E-R, 321 Grayling Avenue.
S-P-E-E-R.
E-E-R.
Your question?
321 Grayling Avenue. Just a quick question about, there is a tree replacement requirement in our code, and I wonder if you had the opportunity to examine that and...
Well, we'll conform with whatever requirements we have to...
This is different from the street tree requirement, but it has to do with how many trees are removed.
We'll do this inside. We'll, we'll do that calculation during land development as, as required.
Okay. We go further questions. Let us take five minutes, hard five minutes. If you'd like to come up and look at the exhibits, they'll be laid out for you, you can walk through, and then we will re-adjourn to have a session of public comment. Good. Thank you.
Did you not have an ATX?
Did you not have an ATX?
Should we just turn it over?
Thank you. Thank you. So, we'll do a similar physical format. This is an opportunity for you to make a public comment. There will be no question and answer, either between Council or any of the witnesses that are here from the developer. This is an opportunity for you to come and speak your mind about 114 Forest. You can ask questions, and some of us might write this down and follow up on them, but this is not question and answer. It's just public comment. If any of you would like to speak, some of you take the first place with the microphone, and we will keep the three minutes. Anyone? Mr. Schoenhardt?
David Schoenhardt, 131 Marion Avenue, also 105 Forest Avenue, the owner of DSS Building, Close Your Heart. As a longtime resident and as a business owner in Narberth, I share my concern for the proposed development in 114 Forest at Windsor, but I share my greater concern for the misplaced attitude of zoning for development's sake that is too apparent within the borough. The developer's proposed development appears to comply with the borough's zoning requirements, but this does not make the development beneficial to our community. While the borough zoning has, I think, mistakenly allowed four stories, this building seems one story too tall, and it visually overpowers the neighborhood. While the borough zoning has allowed six-foot and fifteen-foot setbacks, this building is hugging the West property line so tightly that the pre-existing apartment built on North Essex with multiple windows only five feet from their rear property line is caused negative impact by this new development. This development proposal needs to not only comply with zoning, it also needs to try to become a good neighbor. My greater concern, however, is the ill-visioned efforts of the Borough Council and Planning Commission to rapidly revise and rewrite zoning codes to the developer's intents. The Borough and Planning Commission need to be much more conservative in charting a course to keep Narberth Narberth without opening up the floodgates to development. That increased development can easily and inadvertently drive up density to beyond what we would today call Narberth cute. The increased development is actually guaranteed to drive up the cost of Narberth's apartment of housing crisis, which is opposite to our concern for encouraging more affordable and diverse housing. And finally, the di... finally, the increased development will drive up the administrative and legal costs to the borough. There is a charm to Narberth that is its value. Narberth's historically diverse housing and accessibly... an accessible quaint business district is beneficial to the building of our strong community. Narberth's pedestrian and mass transit orientation is supportive of families living within the dense Philadelphia metropolitan area. There is a misconception that the nationally popular Smart Growth Initiative only means increased new development in mass transit communities, but instead it overlooks that smart growth also says to be respectful.
Fifteen seconds.
Okay. Our future is not catering to each new development opportunity, but instead slowing it down with care and steadiness to chart a future we can all be proud of. Thank you.
Thank you.
I wouldn't. You know, I've received advice from the solicitor. These comments really need to be focused on the development itself. I know that Mr. Schoenhardt's thoughts are mirrored in a lot of your minds, so I indulge so that he can get it out, but really for these comments to be focused on 114 Forest rather than broader policy goals of the borough. Thank you.
Bill Mangielly. I don't really intend to focus my comments on 114. It seems to me that this development is complying with all of the code, and I see some unintended consequences in a code that was designed to keep Narberth Narberth. You know, since I've lived here, the only thing I've ever heard residents get upset about...
This is... these are comments that absolutely you should feel free to come to a council meeting and address.
Okay. These are all related to this project, then?
Please focus on this project.
Fine. So, since I've been here, I've only heard people really get up in arms about parking, okay? And so, this project is going to increase the density, clearly. This is not a community where people come to live without a car. Urban communities have establishments with no parking. When you live in a city, you're... you are by rights, you know, just... you don't have a car, okay? People move here with cars. So, there's going to be a hundred, at least, cars in this... in this building. Council is kicking the can down the road, frankly, by saying that we... we're going to address parking another time. Specifically for this building, I think I heard Council say, "We are not going to issue permits for residents to park on the street." Well, every other apartment building, you issue permits to park on the addressed street of the building.
That's not true.
It's not true.
Okay. That was my understanding. So, you're saying that you're going to deny residents parking permits for street parking? So, as a developer, I'd be pretty concerned that I'm gonna send... I'm going to put out a $3,000 unit, somebody's gonna move in, and they're gonna say, "Where do I park my other car? Where do my guests park?" And they're gonna move out. So, from a developer's standpoint, that doesn't make a lot of sense to me. So, anyway, I think there's a lot of unintended consequences coming from this, and I wonder if Council ever thought that something this big for Narberth should have been put to a reference book.
Thank you. Thank you for refocusing those thoughts. I appreciate it.
Vince Quinn. Who you are, Nate? 68 Wendell Road. I've done work for Mr. Caden. I've probably done work... I have done work for the next apartment developers, probably Mr. Fagan across the street. I have a lot of experience with apartment buildings. I can tell you, before I came over here tonight, I rode around the downtown. There were nine available parking spaces at 7:15 in the downtown district. I can guarantee you, there are going to be at least another 25 cars attributable to the apartment complex that are going to be looking for a parking place, and they're gonna find it at 6:30, whenever 6 o'clock, whenever the meters are done, they're gonna park there and take those spaces away. That's not counting on guests coming in, you know, two a night, five a night, whatever it is. Okay. The 25 extra cars generated by the apartment complex, there's no place to rent. We're nine of them, nine spaces tonight. What's going to happen is the people who are going to want to come to the restaurants are not going to be able to find a parking place and are going to go someplace else. The shoppers want new people. They're going to get the new people, but there's no place for them to park, so they're going to go someplace else. I really think that the complex, no matter how well-intended, is going to be detrimental to the borough.
Thank you.
Okay. Alexander Ting. I just want to reiterate that I hope you will reconsider the aesthetics of the building and not try to answer a little bit more to what Narberth looks like around it rather than what you can do with this code and... rather than going to the maximum, because I feel that the borough code, the people who created the code did not do a responsible job. They're... they've created problems with tinderboxes of development that are exploding all over the place. We have something like five or six projects that are in the works in some stage. This is only one of many, many possible other buildings that can go up, and some of them could be large, some of them are smaller, but all in all, it's going to create a huge problem for the infrastructure and everything about it. So, I want to implore you to go over and above what you have to do under the code to make this building work in Narberth. I think the cornices are really too heavy and square. The whole structure is... the fact that it's symmetrical does not answer to the different streets around it, because each street has a very different character. So, if you could take another look and take another look about... at the entrance to the garage and where it is, I think that would be really important. Thank you.
Thank you.
Just listening, I don't fault the developers. This borough's created a code that's attractive for you, made it very attractive for you to build a building here. I get it. However, the problem that I see with parking in this building is, with four efficiencies, and these were estimates given tonight, 27 one-bedrooms and 25 two-bedrooms, we would essentially have, with one person per bedroom, 31, we'd have 81 people. Even at the point-nine ratio, we're going to have 20 extra cars, at least. I'm not going to do the math right now, because I only have three minutes. But, we're going to have potentially 81 cars, times it by point-nine. Let's say we'll have 72. Fifty-two spaces, 20 extra cars downtown. And those people, on Saturdays and Sundays, which are probably the most important business day for the people downtown and the businesses downtown, are going to wake up, pull out of their garage, pull out of their spaces where they've parked three blocks away, where they can get away with it in front of some of our houses. They're gonna go to Whole Foods, come back with their groceries, they're gonna park downtown, and they're gonna sit there for two hours, or as long as they can. And then, that's going to kill a parking space for business. Now, if all 70 cars in development do that, it's going to be an absolute disaster. But even if half of them do that, the business, you know, I hear people saying, "Oh, we want to increase density, increase business." We're actually increasing density and killing parking, which is going to kill our businesses downtown. So, that's the first part. The second part is, there was an informational session on Monday night, and Borough Council President, who I respect, because he's a volunteer, he does a good job, stated very clearly that in terms of this development, the four-story rule is in effect. And he stated that though Borough Council has the opportunity to change that four-story allowance, that it will not be done, and that this corridor will remain available for four-story developments and infinitum until another council changes that rule. So, we are essentially looking at the next three to four years of these meetings dealing with another four-story building, another four-story building, another four-story building, until we have nothing left of a downtown. Thank you.
Thank you.
Terry Potts. 104 Maple Avenue. I was at the Planning Commission meeting when Dave Brower introduced the idea of changing the former zoning code to allow for four stories at the corner of Windsor and Essex. And I was at the subsequent meetings when that was discussed. And when Dave Brower introduced it, he said that he was in discussion with a potential client who told him that he needed to have four stories in order to accommodate parking and make a profit. So, I think it's a little disingenuous for both the project individuals and Borough Council to sit here and say, like, "Oh, it's in the code. We can do nothing about it. You're responsible for it happening."
Fred Bush. 105 Fox Holloway. I believe we have a moral responsibility to reduce carbon emissions, ideally by shifting away from our automobile-centered culture. And the only way we're going to do that is through development near transit stations and, I mean, developments like this one. I am pleased that this development has incorporated things like bike parking and electric charging stations, you know, in response... in dialogue with Borough Council, I believe, to further promote other transportation means. And I hear a lot of cynicism that people are actually going to do this and show up and come with our cars, but I believe that younger people are... it's a selling point. It is something that people are looking for, is a place to be out here and to be able to, you know, live without cars. So, I am encouraged to see some of the steps that this development has taken, and I look forward to other developments making... taking even further steps in that direction. Thank you.
Hi. Amy Tikaske Feldman. Forest Avenue. I have a sort of particular interest in development. It's just something I think is fun to read about. And from that reading, I know that there actually are a tremendous amount of studies about cars, what makes for lots of cars in a place and what makes for less cars in a place. And that research is summed up in one little two-line piece, and that says that if you build for cars and traffic, what you will get is cars and traffic. And if you build for people and places, what you will get is people and places. And I want to thank the developer for bringing us a plan that builds for people and places. Thank you.
I'm gonna do last call. Anyone else who'd like to speak after Ms. Fortner? Okay, you're it.
Barbara Fortner. F-O-R-T-N-E-R. 415 Conway Avenue. I'm just really excited about this project because I look ahead 20 years when I'm in my 80s, and I no longer want to maintain a house. It's too much work. I don't want to leave Narberth. Maybe I'm not as mobile as I used to be. Maybe I can't get up the steps and do an apartment building. Where do I move? I can move here, where there's an elevator. I don't think there's a lot of that in the borough. I'm really excited about that. I'd be close to the train, I'd be close to the bus, so I think this is going to be... the status will be really great for us going forward. Thank you.
All right. That will close public comment for this public hearing. So, this public hearing will not close. I'll give...
At this time, we aren't going to be voting on this tonight. We have 45 days in order to render findings of fact and conclusions of law based upon testimony at this hearing. My anticipation would be that at the next council meeting, that will be completed. We will be adjourning into an executive session, though, for quasi-judicial deliberations on this hearing.
All right. Well, why don't we... So, I'll take a motion to adjourn. We're not going back into public session. Motion to adjourn?
I move to adjourn.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
All right. Council members, get your bullets to council chambers.